In 1980, they made a law that anybody that was in the service or is in the service now may stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in the National Anthem. They may salute with their caps on or off, and if they wish, they can put their hand over the heart. Everybody else could stand with their hand over the heart. Now, for you little recruits, why I start learning this, on your command, there's some parts to your command. Your preparatory command would tell you what you're gonna do, and your command of execution, which is the second part. While I give attention, please stand up, everybody. Attention! Please stand! Halt! Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and state please stand, stay standing for the National Anthem. I, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose rough stripes and bright stars through the perilous night? All the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? It proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Halt! Halt! That's like that legend's fore. Everybody should have their hand over their heart, or salute it, if they were a veteran or are the veteran now. Thank you.
Mr. Forswick?
Here.
Mr. Duffin?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Norton?
Here.
Mr. Popple?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Here.
Mrs. Dixon?
Present.
I'm present.
Mr. Rayner?
Good evening to the board of directors. I did have a chance, a little bit beforehand, to talk to the seniors going into the military. So, I won't repeat that to them, what I said, but I would like to point out, Dr. Kurian has been a special friend to the veterans. As you all know, we're building a park down near the stadium, cooperated fully with that. We come here every year, and you can see why we're so excited to come here and honor these seniors. And again, we started this three years ago on Dr. Kurian's watch. So, she promotes patriotism in the school district, and we like that, and I'm sure that you like that and our community likes that. You know, around America, there's thousands of school districts. Some of those school districts, and an entire school district with one or more high schools, they don't get that, they don't get even one student, one senior entering into the military. And that's okay, we're not criticizing that, because it's an all volunteer military that we have in America. But how about this, we have eighteen students entering the military from our senior high classes from the Scranton School District. We appreciate the school district, and we appreciate their parents, our community, for encouraging them to do something which we feel will be something that will help them throughout their life. Now, I would like to introduce the veterans who I brought here with me tonight. We have Jim Puchuar, Jim's commander of VFW Post 25. Bob Killian, Army veteran, Jim's an Army veteran. Joe Sylvester, how about the way Joe says the Pledge of Allegiance? We love that pledge, Joe, thank you so much. Wally Evans, Army veteran. And John Wasneck, happens to be my nephew, Air Force veteran. So, thank you guys for coming here. Now, what I'd like to do is read off the names of, we have some students who could not make it tonight, they have jobs, so that comes first. I'd like to read off their names so that they're part of the record, if you don't mind. And let's see, well, after I redo these names off, then we'll give them a hand and we'll move on. Mia Rios is from Scranton High School, and she's going into the Navy. Christian Carrera is from Scranton High, he's going into the Army. Isaiah Lee is from Scranton High, he's going into the Army. And Nicholas Bellis is from West Branton High School, and he's joining the Navy. So, let's give them, kids, a nice hand. Okay, at this time, before I call up the seniors who are going into the military, I'm going to ask Jim Puchuar from VFW Post 25, speak to these students a little bit and their parents. Jim is the commander of our local VFW post. Jim?
I want to thank each and every one of you, veterans, for giving me this opportunity to be here today, to be part of this honor. This is truly an honor. I am the commander of the VFW Post 25, which is the twenty-fifth VFW in the country, and we represent all our fallen comrades who's, we went through a tough weekend for Memorial Day. And here we are today to give honor and respect to those students who stepped up to the plate and chose to go into the military. I was a graduate of the United States Army, a three-year graduate, and I'm a very proud veteran that I can be here, standing here, speaking to you. You students, you're not students anymore, you're going into the military, you are going to get a degree from a college and be part of a team that their graduates have learned the true meaning of what honor, respect, and dignity is about. You're going to take this course, and you will get a course and an education more than they'll ever find at the University of Notre Dame, or at Harvard, or Yale, or even at Penn State. We, as the veterans, salute you for taking this great step of being part of the same symbol as we all were. There's your symbol right there, the American flag. You're going to get an education that will way beyond that you can imagine, and as Pat said, it will continue when you get out of the service. I am the commander of a VFW that's Veterans of Foreign Wars, and I hope you can come over and join as a veteran, because if you are a regular member, a veteran of foreign war, that means you served in a war, and I hope you never see war. And that was all of our dreams, that serving in the world, going back to the world, from World War I, all the way up to the Persian Iraq and Afghanistan and the Vietnam War. We thought that would be a war that would involve wars. And you will get an education that is well worth the time that you are going to put in. I was standing over there talking with the other veterans, and we're looking at you, and we could all look at you and look at your faces and say to you, we know what you're going to go through. And trust me, you won't do it alone. There's nothing to be afraid of, you've got honor, respect, you'll be respected to the fullest. And when you graduate from the Army, Marine, Air Force, Navy, Coast Guard, whatever branch you jerk, you are with a elite group of people. And we look forward to do a follow-up on each and every one of us, to see how you're doing, whatever your kind of way, if you like your parents, and if we'd like some veteran that could write to you, we'd be glad to. You're not doing it alone, because all of us veterans that came home and got the education and wearing wors, we're in the side of my chair for you. So, we salute you, and I can't go on enough, not only, saying enough, not only for the parents who got you through the step of coming to school, and then your teachers took over, and you as a school board director, so you got them to this level. You all have a lot to be proud of, the parents, they're your children, and we, as the veterans, are proud of you. We don't have to wish you luck, we just wish you success. And remember with you, we all love you, we're in your corner. Thank you.
Okay, our first senior, Daniel Acosta, where's Daniel? He's going into the Marines. And we have Kayden Baldoni, joining the National Guard, and also from Scranton High School. We have Jeffrey Bello, he's from Scranton High School and joining the Marines. Daisy Dominguez, from Scranton High School, joining the Marines. Michaela McDonald, from Scranton High School, joining the Marines. John Mandazzo, from Scranton High School, joining the Marines. Destiny DeDitas, from Scranton High School, joining the National Guard. Kyle Snyder, from Scranton High School, joining the National Guard. Natalia Martinez, from West Branton High School, joining the Marines. Zana Williams, from West Branton High School, joining the Marines. Aleandra Otero, from West Branton High School, joining the Marines. Caleb Mariano, from West Branton High School, joining the Army. And Katie Fontini, from West Branton High School, joining the Army. Now, for the parents and kids, what we're going to do here now, I'm going to excuse you, we're going to go out into the cafeteria, and we'll, we can get some pitchers out there if you want, a group pitcher, or a pitcher with the veterans, whatever you like, okay? So, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner.
Good evening. In place, there should be an act made on the April 30th, looking for actual update. The first section we'll go through is our local revenue. The first section that we'll go through is our local revenue sources, and this is through the first four months of 2019. Globally, the taxes that we've received so far this year are forty billion eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. That consists of our real estate, our Act 511 wages, occupational tax, really transfer, business privileges, merchandise. That same amount as compared to last year was thirty-eight million nine hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, so we're up by one million nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand. A lot of that could be, have to do with timing and disbursements. However, real estate is up one million three hundred and sixty-four thousand compared to that same time last year, and the, obviously, the school board, district levy taxes this past, past budget year are three point six percent, so I attribute some of that increase to that Act, the Act One index levy. In the month of April, we also closed on the sale of our delinquent taxes, that was in the amount of four million six hundred and thirty thousand, which was about a hundred and eighty thousand over our budget of the month, so there's, you know, there's positive there, and obviously, that's one transaction per year. The next piece of our, the next largest piece of our remiss of our, our local is our miscellaneous revenue. In total, we budgeted just over one million one hundred and twenty thousand. That consists of three different areas: stop-loss reimbursements for four hundred thousand, food service transfer of four hundred and forty-five thousand, and other miscellaneous revenue, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Currently, right now, we're showing four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars as miscellaneous revenue. The food service transfer has not taken place yet, that typically happens at the end of the school year where all our costs are calculated, the transfer, the transfers made then. Of the four hundred and sixty-nine thousand that we're showing, the largest piece of that is attributed to about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of stop-loss reimbursement, so, you know, we're looking to reach that four hundred thousand. Overall, local revenue for the first four months is forty-six million three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars on a budget of sixty-nine million one hundred and twenty-five thousand, or sixty-seven percent of our budget. I would say that, you know, things are coming in as, as planned, as budgeted so far through the first four months. The next page will show your state sources of revenue. Through the first four months, the basic and special ed subsidy has, have been received as scheduled, and that totals fourteen million five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And we are set, we actually are, we did receive our next basic ed funding on, on May 31st, it just came in the end of last week. Transportation subsidies have, have been received so far this year, seven hundred and three thousand dollars. We also received our subsidy report, which lists our people transportation subsidy for the eighteen-nineteen school year, so it's showing that we will receive one million one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars on a budget of one point two million, so just a little short, but, you know, pretty close to, to that mark, so that's, that's good to hear. And we should receive our next subsidy for transportation in June. One of the largest pieces of the puzzle for 2019 from state source was the six million dollars ready to run by grant supplemental, and that is to be paid in two months' allowance. We have received our first three million dollars on schedule back in February, and we anticipate receiving the remaining balance in June as, as planned. All our retirement social security reimbursements have been received, received on schedule in 2019, and we anticipate that our first quarter of 2019 reimbursement will be received in June as well, so there's, there's no concern there at this time. Overall, state receipts total just shy of twenty-five million, twenty-four million nine hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars on a budget of eighty-four five oh seven, and we've, represents about thirty percent of our budget so far has been collected. The next page will be your federal revenue sources. At our last meeting, we presented, we weren't showing any title reimbursements at that time, there was a slight delay in some of those. Month of April, they, so we started receiving those funds, and we have received eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars for all of our title programs thus far. The budget total for title is six million thirty-two thousand. We will be submitting a, kind of like a catch-up request, that they can expedite payments, because typically what happens is the report is filed, because we were, we received funds at that time, no report was required, but they've acknowledged that, you know, we are in need of some catch-up contribution, so I envision probably by the next time we're presenting in front of you, we will have more of that for you. Again, overall, federal revenues are eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, on a budget of six million nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, and just about thirteen percent of our budget's been collected. One of the bigger pieces of funding for 2019 was our other sources, which consisted of a sinking fund transfer. There was one set aside in 2014, no sinking fund, that would be budgeted if you were asked to pay the principal interest, that has occurred in April as scheduled, and the next one is set to occur in October, so that as planned, is, is, is working properly. The budget also included the shortfall of three point six million dollars, which we anticipated, annual working capital borrowing. As we last met, the proposed state budget, government budget, would, could potentially net the district in calendar year 2019 just around three point three million dollars more in additional revenue. We're hoping that if that was to come, come through, that the need for any borrowing, any interest in principal that I budgeted for on the expenditure side, wouldn't be necessary, and looking at hopefully a, a year where borrowing's not required. In total, we've collected seventy-two million one hundred and ninety-nine thousand of our budget, which amounts to one hundred and sixty-six million, or just about forty-three percent. So, as of right now, I'm happy with where everything seems to be coming in, as we planned. Do you have any questions on the revenues?
We are going to be getting all of our title funded?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, I don't think it's a concern that it wasn't going to come, it was a time of when we received it. Typically, it works as like a reimbursement, we expend the dollars, we request a reimbursement. There was a change to the budget at paperwork, and it kind of delayed a little bit, but the funds are coming in as scheduled. So, following there, we have our, our budget summary reports, which are printed out from our CSU software, so those are the next three pages. It's just a recap of what we talked about, I just want to throw them out. If you go over to the page following CSU, you'll see the expenditure budget for Scranton School is broken up by function, from instruction all the way down to your, to your debt service. So far this year, we've expended twenty-two million, twenty-two point eight million of our salary budget, just about sixty-eight million. We appear to be on schedule with, with our salaries, which obviously is our largest expenditure. Healthcare so far this year, pensions, like, all appear to be in line with where we anticipated them to be at the beginning of the year. Part of, one of the helps with healthcare this year was, we, for some changes to prescription plans, we engaged a group to increase our stop, uh, our stop-loss, I'm sorry, our prescription rebates, and we, that's, that has materialized, we have seen that, so our rebates with prescription have increased, and we are, we are showing that. Overall, we've expended forty-seven million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, and we've encumbered another nine hundred and twenty-four thousand on crew payables, or just about twenty-nine point four percent of our budget. Our receipts have, just as somewhere last month, our receipts have, obviously, surpassed our expenditures to date, but that's not uncommon for this time of year. May, when I report to you in May, you'll see a large debt service payments in June, we will, we'll shoot that sort of thing, so that will catch up soon, but it's, it's not uncommon to see that this early. There's some areas that we're going to keep, keep an eye on, some of our contracted costs for special ed are trending a little higher than we anticipated. We increased the budget for contracted services by about three hundred thousand dollars last year, so we're keeping an eye on that there. And as I reported last month, some of our maintenance for repairs and maintenance and supplies in that department is at about fifty-five percent of our budget so far this year. There obviously was some, some difficult weather, and they, they had that earlier in the year, so we're keeping an eye there as well. But other than those two areas, there's, I don't see too many major areas of concern So, that would be my presentation, we seem to have, have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Laughing.
Okay, under budget finance, under consent, we have a resolution for the approved bill list, again, under consent, the approval for the exceptional, exception bill list, resolution to approve delinquent tax reports under consent, approve the treasurer's report under consent, approve the statutory sale under consent, approve the budget transfers under consent, and as far as the resolutions are concerned... On B six, the superintendent of schools and the budget finance committee present the following resolution for your consideration to be resolved at the treasurer's report.
We'll drop that, that'll be moving.
Pardon me?
That'll have to be made.
Oh, sorry, okay, okay, under the regular meeting. And a resolution to approve, award workman's comp, a third-party administrator, resolution to approve the tax assessment appeal, and a resolution to approve taxes and property settlements.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fuzzler. Director Jockey?
What, what?
Do you have a question, Mr. Director Schuster?
Yeah, we got a couple different bids for the workman's compensation. I don't know if you'd like to, the board would like to go run through those, those bids. I did see there was some unknowns there that I feel.
We received, excuse me, we received five bids in total. There are, we have a summary that I think we provided for you that breaks up each company's proposal, which was starting with their annual, what we call, flat fee, and also any additional expenditures related to hourly rates for nurse case management, medical bill, claim reviews, peer reviews, pharmacy reviews, travel times, and case management. We had, it also lists the savings fee. That, that fee is, the lower the number, it's actually more beneficial to the school district. Any repricing of any invoices, they would take a lower percentage of savings as a cost to them. So, we presented that, again, there was five, and we'll be recommending...
And we'll be recommending ex-caliber management this evening with a $45,000 claim cost and a $12,000 nurse case management cost for a total of $57,000. That's all inclusive and includes all of our fees.
Yeah, that's what it seemed to be. I think there was some, you know, steep below, and there's associated cost of thousands. I would assume that they'll go well over $30,000.
I would base off our first calculations, yes.
Okay.
The set fee cost, you know, even if we experience a bad year, we at least know we can target a budget for it appropriately.
Yes. All right, thank you. That answers any questions?
Any other questions? Okay. Director Delfi?
Thank you, Madam President. Under community relations, I have a resolution to approve the Lockmont College advertising agreement. That will be the only thing I have.
Director Norton?
Under education, you have a resolution to approve the ATSI plan for Scranton High West, excuse me, West High Trip and West Intermedia. A resolution to approve 2019, 2020 school calendar. The resolution to honor Caesar, excuse me, Acosta Skills USA Medalist, Gold Medal in Computer Systems, Cybersecurity, and will attend the national competition in June. A resolution to approve, approve permission to attend the Scranton High School field trip.
I have a question. Are all of these to be on the consent agenda?
I'm looking at...
Yeah, I'm just a little confused by that. Are these all to be on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes. Where are they? Okay.
This is all good, we're working on the last one.
You got all those in your packets last week?
Right.
The principals are going to be presenting the ATSI plans tonight.
Okay.
The school calendar, that's our start date condition.
But what I'm saying is, are these all under the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Now, we adding that D4 to that consent agenda? Uh, D4 under education, yes. I was just bringing that to this, uh, morning. That's Scranton High.
So, so, excuse me, Dr. Chair, so the vote to have it, the show then is under consent, but he will be added at the break of meeting?
Yes. And are we doing the presentations of the...
So we pull the resolution from the consent?
Now? So the principals are here. I'm going to start. Joe Lally?
May I? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Thanks for going out. I have one other question, if it is intended to be under the consent agenda. With approved permissions to attend, there is one person listed here that I believe was on leave. Is this simply something that is required, and this person will be attending?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So we're calling the principals up now to present. Yeah, and Joe Lally is going to lead us on to that. Mr. Lally?
Good evening, School Board. Dr. Kellen?
Good evening, Joe.
Behind are the fellow colleagues that have worked on the ATSI plans. We will be brief, I just have a brief introduction of what the plans were, how it was formed, and then going through each individual school, okay? Behind you on the screen should be a short recap of the presentations, our goals, and our objectives. The ATSI process, which stands for Additional Targeted School Improvement, came under the ESOP plan for the state, which is Every Student Must Succeed Act. Schools are required to develop a comprehensive plan if their student populations don't meet the requirements for school improvement. So all of our schools presented tonight are under that category. All are performing or need help in students with learning disabilities and for Scranton High graduation rates of the English Language Learner Process, okay? Just to give you a brief overview of it. This process is mandated by PDE. And the committees were formed with a facilitator leading each committee. The facilitator was independent of the school, did not work with the school, did not have any prior engagement with the school. Our facilitators were myself, Scranton High, Ian Gribek worked with Isaac Tripp, Joseph Haney with West Grant High School, and Mina Aristani helped out at Western Media. They were the facilitators, and they were part of the steering committee. The steering committees were formed with teachers, community members, business partners, college professors, parents, so on and so forth. We met on a monthly basis to draft a plan. Those plans were drafted based on research that we did for best practice, student surveys, parent surveys, and interviews done with colleagues and students as well. We acquired all the data and we put into a plan based on what the committee felt was the most need for the school to meet those areas that they were recommended by the state to approve. At that point, the plans were drafted. Dr. Keating, who can't be with us tonight, sat in on all the meetings. And Dr. Kirian reviewed our plans for each of the schools, obviously, we're presenting tonight. And here were some of the areas where the schools primarily came to consensus on. In order to do this effectively and with fidelity, professional development for our staff is critical. We, as a group, organize, and we continue to organize the building principals, monthly release time for professional learning. And that will occur during the school day at very little to no additional cost to the district. We would have a compressed schedule on certain days that are going to be built in or have already been built into the calendar for next year. All the schools, if you take a look at the second bullet, will concentrate on differentiated instruction for our learners. Our staffs will be trained in it. We have Alexis Bagney from the IU coming to train the building principals and the facilitators. So in turn, they can train the staff on all of the elements of differentiated instruction, which through research has shown will improve where we need our areas of concern with our students with learning disabilities on our state testing. We will also take a look at professional learning committees for teachers to better use and utilize our professional development time that we set aside for our teachers so that this can be a three-year plan, and that we could focus solely on improving those areas that the state has identified for us for concerns. And the last part, I think I hit on it, but all of what we're doing in the next three years concerning the ATSI plans are targeted and are meant to hit the areas that each school deemed necessary as per state. We'll get into the various schools now, okay? Any questions so far?
Sure.
Good evening. So as Mr. Lally had indicated, Scranton High School was targeted by PDE in the areas of students with disabilities and also our English Language Learners in the area of graduation rate. So we put together a committee, again, that was comprised of students, parents, community members, teachers, administrators from our school districts and college, professionals and professors, which included one person also from our medical college, Geisinger Medical School. So at Scranton High School, we've identified three areas and three goals that we're going to improve on next year. The first, as Mr. Lally said, talks about differentiation of assessments. The second area talks about differentiation in the classroom when it comes to instructional methods or strategies. And the third area to improve both attendance and graduation rate of those targeted students was to implement a school-wide positive behavior system throughout the school. So our objective is to meet those goals, kind of go hand-in-hand with what we talked about. We are going to provide our teachers with professional development on those two areas of differentiated instruction and assessment, and establish those resources and strategies necessary so that teachers can utilize them in their classrooms. And the second bullet point up there talks about how to motivate students through that school-wide positive behavior system in order to meet attendance and graduation requirements through that positive behavior support system.
Good evening. As Mr. Lally said, and Mr. Coyle echoed as well, we went through the same process at West Grant High School, forming our steering committees, going through our meetings, and what really stood out through our meetings was the feedback we got from our teachers and focus groups. The feedback we got from our committee members and the parents that were on the committees. And they all focused around these three goals. Identify and address individual student learning needs. Identify professional learning needs through analysis of a variety of data. Use systematic collaborative planning processes to ensure instruction is coordinated aligned and also evidence-based. So our objectives are based on those three goals. We talked about more differentiation in the classroom, multi-tiered levels of support to honor our school-wide positive behavior program. Consistent continued professional learning. We mentioned, we talked a lot about consistent professional learning for our teachers, and really targeted professional learning, about what they wanted to learn based on our building goals and what we wanted to accomplish as a faculty and as a staff at West Grant High School. Talked about establishing protocols for collaboration. Looking at our keystone forces, there are tested areas, and giving those teachers collaborative and collaborative periods so they can talk about common assessments, common themes within their classes, rating, goals and initiatives, and things that they want to accomplish.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Western Intermedia. I agree, I agree with Sarah. Oh, I'm sorry. Absolutely sunny day. She just tweeted that in West Grant, it's always sunny and rainy.
Hello, my name is Mina Aristani. I'm a facilitator working with Paula Daniel Voice at Prince Wilmer Pickles Plaza Elementary School. Like the presenters prior to us, we come up with the same process. We've had several, several meetings. I'd say it was bi-weekly, rather monthly. And our goal at West Grant Intermedia, based on student feedback, parent feedback, and committees that have gathered regularly, discussed all the data that Paula Daniel looked so hard to present, and the goal that we came up with at West Intermedia were to promote and sustain a positive environment where all members feel welcome, supported, and safe in school socially, emotionally, nutrition, physically. To identify professional learning needs through analysis of a variety of data, and then aligning curriculum, assessments, and instruction at PA standards. So that goes with the essential practice. Those are actually three of the essential practices through this process.
How we're going to try to meet those goals is, you know, we're going to try to increase our parent and family engagement in the schools, and really, I want people in the schools. We want these families to come in. That's become a huge obstacle, a huge hurdle, that is very difficult to get people to come in the door. And when you're trying to create buying within that school community, you need that partnership with parents and families. So we're going to invite families to come into the school, and we want to increase our family participation at school events. We're going to offer ongoing professional development for staff. Through all their surveys, they're creating, and specifically focusing on differentiated instruction, differentiated assessment, and that will certainly benefit where our math deficiency was with regards to our large students with disabilities. And our third one is to increase mathematics achievement and growth for all summer groups. We're going to try to provide remediation within the same class period. The one benefit we have as a secondary school at the intermediate level is that we have 56-minute class periods, which is a long time for a secondary school. And we're going to try to provide small group remediation within that class period, getting creative with our staff, we're getting creative with our staff. Our really, our goal is to increase basic math skills, because that's going to go a long way. But that's the plan for Western Intermedia. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paul Sipani. I'm one of the two principals at West, or I'm sorry, at Isaac Tripp Elementary School.
I'm Kelly Coine. I take care of the school from secondary to high school elementary.
Again, you're going to hear a lot of similarities with our plans. The interesting thing about this, though, is that the four schools involved had four separate steering committees. All involved students, parents, community members, as you've heard before. Despite that, we came up with very similar goals and a similar action plan. I think that one of the most enlightening things or positive things about the whole process was giving students a voice. Students participated in classroom walkthroughs and had tremendous insight with regard to what was happening in our building. So I want to thank everybody that was involved in the process. Because seeing things through my eyes, through Kelly's eyes, through two sets of eyes, limits us to just two sets of eyes. And bringing all these people in was a tremendous asset, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. So our first goal was to promote and sustain a positive school environment where all members feel welcome, supported, and safe in school socially, intellectually, and physically. The second goal, identify professional learning needs through analysis of a variety of data. And the final goal, implement a multi-tiered system of support for academic and behavior.
Our objectives for our plan include increasing parent and family engagement, increasing communication among families, and continuing to analyze our positive behavior and intervention support program. Providing targeted professional development opportunities for faculty and staff with regard to our PBIS, that is our Positive Behavior Intervention Support System. Provide professional development for differentiated instruction and assessment. And targeted instruction for both math and DLA in order to increase achievement in both areas and prioritizing that achievement and specifically focusing on math. And finally, to implement RTII, which is Response to Instruction and Intervention for K-2 at this time. Planning would be during the 2019, 2020 school year with full implementation during the 2020, 2021 school year, and collaborating with all the teachers and faculty in grades three to five to then bring RTII building-wide. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone who's been involved in this project. It's been a long project, and the work that's been done is truly phenomenal. From our standpoint in central office, we are trying to help with making some changes in the calendar where we will have release time monthly now for teacher professional learning, where this year it was condensed to a few months throughout the year. And then we will actually begin our professional development at our Summer Leadership Institute for our principals, who will carry it back to our teachers. So for all of you who've been involved in this, we know this is just the beginning. And we hope that this will be implemented with fidelity. And I was happy to see the focus on the plans for mathematics and to engage families more in education, because we know that's what it's going to be about. So thank you again for all your hard work.
Thank you. Mr. Norton, you got through all of those, right? And somehow, we're going on to operations. Director Lesh?
Yes, we have a few resolutions. We're awarding the integrated pest management. Awarding the environmental health. Awarding shredding, I'm sorry. Awarding improved sale of used vehicles.
Okay, we'd like to make some comments under operations for what Mr. Lesh just presented. For pest management, environmental health, and shredding, we received no responses to our RFPs. As far as sale of used vehicles were concerned, we had one person come and look, and there was no offers for those vehicles. So the resolutions will not be read at the regular board meeting because we have no interest from vendors. Yes, but we're putting per board direction, everything up to bid. They didn't bid on it. They'll, we'll just continue to use them the way we currently use them. It's a call for certain instances, and they come and serve the district. And then the Hunt project bids. We have Hunt, Michael Jones, I believe, is here tonight. And he is going to talk to you about the projects we've been looking at through Hunt Engineers. Hi, Michael.
Hi.
Hi.
Well.
So if nobody, if everybody knows me, Mike Jones from Hunt Engineers Architects. Glad to be here tonight. We've been working with multiple projects for the district. There's a packet here that was handed out to you that identifies all the projects and where, where we are with each of them. The first one is the Francis Willard Water Infiltration Project. We've done a report there. We did some investigations as far as where the water was coming into the cafeteria. We were able to snake, snake out an underground storm line that comes from the roof gutters, comes into the building. We found a clean out there and traced it down and actually found a clock. You have a video of that. It's pretty much right on the, the wall that's buried on, on the cafeteria. So we're pretty, pretty confident that that's the issue there. Water's getting backed up underground. It's, it's kind of a tough spot to get, to get into. It's an crawl space. So the report outlines a fix for that. We would recommend, you know, tying the storm, the gutters into a storm system outside of the building. We think that would be more feasible than trying to excavate inside the building footprint and, you know, expose those damage lines. So the report outlines that. There's also a proposal for us to do the design services of that project. You know, the report was to identify the issue and a potential solution. So there is a proposal here attached that we could review, that we could proceed with that design. So that's all in the packet. Do you have any specific questions about that project? This next project is the Armstrong, the H P A C issues there. We put together a report, our mechanical engineer did. They've been coordinating with C P three. We did the energy performance contract there. I'm calling it an interim report because we still do have some work to do, I believe, coordinating with them. We've identified some deficiencies with the controls. We laid that to C P three. And their response was coming back with some issues about broken fans. You know, we, we reported that the, the controls were not working properly or the units were unable to be controlled. And they were saying that some of that was because of a bad motor, broken switch, or filter needed to be clocked. So that's more of a maintenance item that C P three is saying is going to be done.
Mr. Jones, is that in the scope of their work or that they're saying that that's in the scope of the school district?
Well, I guess I'm not sure. I'm, I'm definitely need to coordinate further with C P three on that. I, I want to get together with them and actually, you know, we can identify which areas aren't being controlled. And if they want to put together this list of, of issues that they think are wrong with the units, then we could share that with you. I, I believe they're saying that those are more maintenance items for the district.
Before we move forward, I, sorry, Mr. Laffey, Mr. Rizzoli isn't here. Do you know when it comes to the H A C U S that Mr. Jones is speaking about, was that in the scope of the work for the ESCO project?
I don't know the answer to that. I'll, I'll.
Mr. Schuster, there was some work done by C P three at Armstrong. We've had a lot of mishaps this winter with the heating in that building. And I, I believe Michael talked to C P three.
Correct.
And there, there are some issues that C P three is saying are not what they did in the district, that they are, there are responsibility. Is that correct?
At this time, that's what we interpreted as that. We'll, I want to finish this process.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you there. So going forward, we can just watch, watch for that, that's, that's in the scope of that, that work. Even in the scope.
That's right.
Yeah, no, I understand that we'll, we'll finish that report for that project. You know, there's work still to be done on our, on our agenda, C P three, so we'll present more information to be on that.
Thank you.
Okay, the next project is John Whittier Playground. That is currently out for bid to the contractor, I believe. Mr. Laffey talked to you about going through the Keystone Purchasing Network. So, you know, kind of a step-by-step on that is we're planning to issue a, a report to the city about some findings we found at, at the city-owned street, get all in place. So there's a piece of a curb that was missing there. That really, the water runs down that curb that's missing and into the neighbor's property. We don't feel that that is a responsibility of the district. So we're gonna, you know, make the city aware of that, you know, we feel we can, we can do that to assist the district. There's other areas in the playground area that we are addressing and that's out of bid.
Pardon me, I don't think we have this. Number zero. Is there any, I don't have a packet that looks like this. I do, but I don't see Whittier in here. Yeah, we don't have Whittier.
It's just number three here.
Yeah, okay. Oh, so there is a corresponding.
I don't, no, not that one. Sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah. So yeah, I'm just going through the items on number three. So as I stated, we're planning to send that to the city. The other areas there that, that we think will, you know, help with the runoff. There's runoff coming down the hill through the playground area. It's pretty evident when you go up there. Look at that, you know, all the mulch from the playground has, has kind of eroded and runoffed down the hill to the neighbor's adjacent property. So the current set of drawings that are out for bid include redirecting the stormwater by putting a curb around the playground, also regrading that portion inside the, inside the curb to be more, more flattened out through the road rather than towards that adjacent house. There's an alternate, which we determined during the design to do as an alternate. You know, you'd be able to see base bid for the curb and the regrading. Then an alternate to do more effective drainage underneath. We would do a subbase and a perforated underdrain underneath the new wood mulch surface of the playground. And to, to make that per code, you would need to tie that to a rain garden so it naturally infiltrates. That's really the, the setup of the design there. We're, we're still looking at a ballpark construction of 100,000 to 200,000 there. And we're thinking base bid 100,000, alternates maybe closer to 200,000. We're not totally sure. We're waiting that final pricing still from the contractor through the K P N, which is through Gordian Group, and that's Jake Thomas is the contractor. I, I was anticipating the quotes today, but I got a call at like two o'clock. They said they couldn't have it. So we need to do more work on getting what they need. They, they want to have a meeting on site for a new existing condition, which I think is going to be beneficial. We don't want to rush the number and have a, have a number come through that's not accurate and not, you know, maybe competitive or low, low with what you need. So we're looking to set that meeting up and then get the prices back. I told them no later than June 19th for those prices.
So we're going to miss, our date was, our goal was tonight to have the board vote on these. But they can't vote on them without the, the cost attached to them. So this will be pushed to our August meeting.
Yep. Okay, yeah, I mean, if there's, yeah, we can discuss maybe a, a different route to get Whittier approved. I'm not sure if there is. I mean, the, the West Grant, is, is it the same code as that? And I think we need to talk about the schedule on that one.
Yeah, I received something out late today from Saint Thomas Company.
Yeah, that's attached in the manual for West Grant.
For the science lab.
Yeah. Which I, I can get to that one.
Yeah.
Nice to hear.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what route to follow. I don't know if there's a way to have a special meeting or something to, when we get these costs back, reward, at least reward the contract. I mean, John Whittier can, we've heard can easily be done this summer during the summer school break. It's not, doesn't involve a complete time of any materials. So they can get the, get the stuff they need and get it done pretty quickly. It just.
Well, basically, it's like a swamp over there now.
Yeah.
And the neighborhood and all the debris has been going in the neighbor's yard.
Yeah.
Paul, how quickly can you get prices?
I'll check with him again. He was saying he could have it the end of this week. But I, I didn't want to give you guys another date and have not, not come through with the quote. I'm kind of playing middleman here with the contractor, so.
You have children that use that space and write down it's unusable because of the conditions in the climate.
Right.
You got debris going in the neighbor's yard. So I think it might be to our best interest to have a special meeting, maybe just for that purpose.
Right.
I had you, we're having a recovery meeting in the school, right? So why not at the same time? Because I think we're gonna be somewhere and maybe not here. Together, so we can, we can happen to that.
The other thing is we're not gonna be able to finish this work before the final day of school. So it's gonna be done over the summer anyway, so.
Yes, that's what the plan is.
But we'd like to be able to have the kids to, during the fall season, be able to use that now.
Yeah, no, that'd be, I'd appreciate that.
I'm sure the neighborhood would be ecstatic. That might be more debris going in their yard.
Right.
No questions?
Yeah. Was it, was it, given that the numbers couldn't be available for this evening? I feel as though we've been talking about this a very long time.
You know, that's a good question, Ms. Gilmore, because, no, I, I had to get, I had to get in the swing of things with the way Hunt actually does their work. So Michael, do you want to explain to the board what you explained to me? That how you start a project and you have different phases before you finally get to the final pricing? So would you share with them, would you share with me?
Yeah, I mean, when we were, I guess, approved to proceed with the projects for design, there was, for both projects, for Whittier and the West Grant Science Labs, there was multiple design phases. We started with schematic design and developed that design and tried to give updates on construction cost, budgeting in each phase. But, you know, it involved different meetings with Dr. Kiriad and Mr. Laffey about, you know, this is the scope of work. We decided what would be base bid, what would be alternate on the playground and kind of went from there. It came, it came to bidding, which was, I want to say three weeks ago, I think, when we put it on the bid. Typically, a, a project of these sites will go up to public bid for four weeks. So we saw the K P N as a way to expedite that. So it's, it's not up for public bid. We're, we're able to kind of streamline with K P N and get a quality contractor. We, you know, we won't get a local contractor. Maybe we don't know who they are, how they perform. So we saw the benefits for, for K P N. And, you know, unfortunately, I, I said to the guy at K P N today, you know, I'm pretty close to where I could have put it off a public bid and we're in the same schedule. So that's kind of out of my hands. I, I know I've been pushing them to get it done. And I, I feel like we're, we're still in line with where we would have been either way. It was just kind of whether it was approved, how we worked through the design. It was really a tight schedule to begin with.
Michael, K, K P N is similar to CoStar's type of bidding, just so you, you all know where, where that comes from.
Yeah, I think just the, the amount of work that we had to do to get the designs ready was already a tight schedule to, for, for construction this summer. I mean, to the typical design project, if you want to start, you know, maybe even the, the year before, in the fall or winter, if you want to start to design that and proceed into summer construction. And we started it, you know, first in the year or in the spring, and we were getting started on the design.
So just to clarify, these projects have been designed, we've paid for that, and we still don't have a realistic number of what the actual work will cost?
Correct.
Yes. That doesn't seem like a great system to me. Thank you.
Any other questions specifically about that playground?
Yeah, can I, can I just ask one? With your designs right now that you're talking about doing, with all this commotion about the Chesapeake Bay runoff and all this stuff, is, are there plans subject to change in the very near future? Like this Chesapeake thing with hard surfaces runoff and everything like that to control water flow. That is not going to affect your final results?
No, I, I don't believe so for this project. No.
So Michael, if you get the bids, let's say we gather again mid-June. You'll have all the pricing, the total cost of the projects.
Correct.
Correct? And then you'll begin right away to be completed prior to the beginning of the school year?
Yes, we would, that would be our goal for John Whittier, yes.
How about the others?
The, the West Grant, I outlined on the, on the second page of the, of this handout. You can see, item C is the, the schedule. That project involves replacement of casework. We were told during the bidding phase, the contractor was putting together the price, that, that this work cannot happen during the summer due to the fact that the fabrication of the casework. So you can see here, I can outline the process. There's a, once you award the contract, they have to get shot drawings in. That involves four to six weeks, one to two weeks for approvals. Then they start manufacturing the casework. There's also a few months that take longer. You can see that. Then they ship it, then they install it. So I've kind of outlined the durations and then the, the potential completion dates of those. Is that item four, letter C. And the options going forward, I think to, now that we know it can't be done this summer, would be, you could potentially proceed with some of the abatement there and the minor casework demolition during the summer break. So we could get it started. You could allow remaining casework, removals of plumbing, the electrical installation and connections to occur second shift in the fall while school's in session. So that could be an option. If, if that is an option, I do need, need to know that because that, I mean, the national ex here that that may affect their cost, the contractor's cost, they would need to plug in second shift labor work there. So it may be an increase to the cost. Or the next option is to hold off until construction until summer break in 2020.
Wow. That's a disappointment.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Sorry to report that.
Because I, I, I would not recommend to the board that we approach this project on the second shift where it would cost additional funding. We just can't afford to do that. So we'll, we'll talk again.
How about?
So we're pulling this out of the board agenda? Yes, we, we will not vote on these projects until we have the cost. And we will need to do it at a special meeting, hopefully at the recovery meeting, whenever that is this summer.
Yep.
Just for a moment to revisit the situation at Whittier. As Mr. Lesh mentioned, I know this is affecting a lot of the neighbors. And it indicates here that a report is being sent to the city about the curbing. What are we doing to advocate for these people? How can we help them? If the city's responsible for this damage, if we are responsible for this damage and it's going on and on and on, what?
Well, the, the city, we've been talking to the city about this curbing for about a year and a half now. Michael's company took the initiative to actually go ahead and, and request them to fix the curbing as part of the project. Have you heard back from them yet?
We have not, no.
Yeah.
And we, we had a verbal conversation with them and we're, we're planning to follow up with an official letter, which we'll send to the doorway for review prior to setting.
So Kelly, I believe you're asking, is there restitution for these people? Because the runoff is from our property and from the fact that the city doesn't have the curb there. I'd have to ask Mr. Laffey to check with our insurance companies to see if there is anything that we could do. But I think part of the responsibility all. anything that we could do, but I think part of the responsibility also has to be with the city. So we'll look into that.
I certainly would go on record to say, whatever the city needs to do, needs to be done. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, do we think that the curbing is going to help this greatly? I, I've seen the, I've seen this lot, it's on a hill, there's an alley with the school parking lot behind it. I mean, that water's coming down that hill, and there's an old foundation of a home in there, so no matter what you do with that fill, that foundation of that home is gonna come down in there. So to me, it seems like there's a good part in it, I mean, with the weather we're getting now, there's a good chance there's gonna be water in that area. Do we think that just the curbing alone is going to help that or just mitigate it somehow?
I, I think it was kind of two separate things. It's the curb, I mean, there was, when, we were fortunate enough to see it when it rained when we did our fieldwork, right where the curb was, it was pretty much a stream that ran through the house. So, you know, that's one area. And then the, the playground, I think, is a different area, which is property you own in the current design, is in place to fix those issues. So I think we're kind of dealing with it that way, but I do think, yeah, it's gonna, both of those combined will mitigate your issues, we believe. Thank you.
So it's a combination. Any other questions for Mr. Jones?
If, if we do need to go ahead with the Francis Willard, the next steps there, you know, we're, we're ready to do that, so please let us go on now.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, are all of these projects on hold now or?
They're ready, they're ready for Willard, correct?
Ready for Willard, okay.
So are we voting on that tonight? Yes, we're voting on, on Willard, we're holding on West Granton, we're holding on Whittier, correct? And we're holding on Armstrong.
Yeah, we're still working on Armstrong. Willard would be the next, like, phase two, two-year plan for the building.
Right.
That's, that's the proposal.
So your, your propos, your proposal is the design work for Willard?
Right.
To, to correct the problem in that basement area?
Correct.
Okay? So that's what we're voting on tonight? That's right. The design phase.
Correct.
Correct, Michael?
Yeah.
It is the design phase. So when we get to that resolution, we're gonna have to amend it.
That was forthcoming. We did not have that resolution ready for the package, so. Or we just, we could just make a motion to, I don't know, you, somebody go type something in.
Yeah. I think, yeah, just as we did at day four, okay?
And do we have a final cost on that? Since I see this is going anywhere between eighty-five thousand to a hundred thousand, but we're, tonight we're just focused on the design?
Yes.
Yeah, can speak a little more to that. So the, you know, we're, we're not the contractors, we don't know the final price of how, what the labor is and the material we do to work. We put together a preliminary construction cost budget of eighty-five, a hundred thousand. And on the last page of the proposal, we outlined, we recommend another ten percent construction contingency on that for any unforeseen issues during construction. Our, our fees would be included in that. There's other estimated incidental costs, like if you have to advertise a bid, if you do this in public bidding, you have to advertise the bid. If there's any construction testing that requires during construction, that would be included in that other twelve percent incidental cost. And that builds you to your total project cost. So, you know, we've started with the design as an incidental cost, and we're ultimately working towards our total project cost. All of that is not known at this time until the pieces start coming together. And, you know, I was hoping to have more pieces in place than I, but I just need a lot more weeks. So that's kind of the, the update. Tonight is, we need some more pieces deposited.
All right, let, let me just clarify, I need to understand, for the Willard project, you're ready to go into the design phase?
Correct.
Do you have a cost for the design phase?
Yes, that's included in the.
Okay, so that is what the board will be voting on tonight, so that you can move forward in the design phase?
Correct.
And what is that number?
That's in the report right there, correct? Yeah, we have a survey, two thousand five hundred dollars, and the design, eight thousand five hundred dollars, plus reimbursables, estimated.
So that's this compensation summary on page three?
Correct.
Part A, part B, and the two thousand dollars for the reimbursable expenses?
Correct.
Okay. So then, is that listed here, project and construction budget summary, eighty fees and reimbursables, thirteen thousand dollars?
So that's, that's what Virginia is going to get a resolution prepared for that? And I'll lay that for tonight, okay? Ready, good?
All right, thank you.
Mr. Lusher, did you do health and safety?
Yes, there's, there's also a resolution under the consent, approve the ban of allergic use for Schramm Ice Cream.
Thank you. Director Quetle?
Under Human Resources, there's a resolution to approve personnel report to its retirements, assignments, appointments, leaves, absences, and resignations. And under Labor Relations, there'll be a resolution to approve Lake Strand's urgent care agreement for medical services.
And is, thank you. Is that, is it F two?
Yes.
The Lake Strand is not going on consent, or will that be right?
Well, you've just, you've had an opportunity to hear about it and discuss it. Mr. Carmody is here tonight, if you'd like him to speak about just one more time, and now we can, we can put it on consent. Mr. Carmody, under.
Good evening, once again. The medical services agreement is with a urgent care facility, Lake Strand Emergency Care. What this is, is an agreement for one year with the, the district and Lake Strand Emergency Care LLC. It is a, for members of, of the union, members of, employees of the district, it's a waiver of the copay, as well as a five percent discount on all insurance billable charges. This also applies to the dependence of the employees as well. This does not affect the current healthcare coverage of district employees. This is simply a waiver of the copay, as well as a five percent discount on the billable charges.
And, and you've spoken to the collective bargaining unions?
Yes, we presented this draft proposal to the unions for their comment, input questions, and we've had those discussions and answered any and all questions that the unions have had.
Matt, may I ask, Matt, i- i- is this just really an incentive? If employees choose to go to that particular healthcare provider, they'll get an additional discount?
Yes, it's an incentive for the employee and their dependents to receive a waiver of copays and a discount on, on their, on their bills.
Thank you. So could, could you just explain how this came about or where this originated from?
Our, the district's third-party administrator, Millennium, brought this to our attention recently, and really communicated as a, as a win-win for the district in terms of saving money for, for the members. But this was brought to the attention by Millennium, specifically Sarah Carter.
And Matt, it's strictly optional for our employees whether or not they want to take advantage of this?
Strictly optional, there's no, there's nothing to compel the members to go to this particular facility. So if there's a, a urgent care facility elsewhere, they're, they're certainly permitted to go there. This is simply just an incentive to go to this particular facility.
And this facility, who do they usually service? It's just a regular urgent care facility?
Yes, yeah, and in the, the proposal, it, it outlines the services that they provide, but it's, it's all, anything that's already covered under the current healthcare coverage of the employee would be covered at this facility. If, if they do offer that particular service, obviously there's something else that requires a specialty, then they obviously wouldn't go there, they'd go somewhere else. But for parameters of an urgent care facility, that's, that's what they're, they're buying.
So just Millennium, as our healthcare consultant, just was looking to search out different ways to save us money on healthcare, and he come upon this group.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably part of their job is to continually to seek out ways that the district can save money and save members money. And I think this, this is one example of, okay, there's, there's a company out here that's willing to provide a, a discount to go to this facility. Nobody's compelling or, you know, nobody's forcing disagreement, but it's simply something that if a district employee wishes to utilize, then they would realize that savings. If they accomplish to utilize this facility, they're not forced. So it's an agreement, I think, that it's a win-win. We presented it to the union members, to the unions, they presented it, or really the only question I think the unions had was, does this change anything about our, our current healthcare coverage? And the answer to that is, is not. This is just a company that's out there offering this discount to come to this facility.
But this doesn't actually realize savings for the district, it is for the employee, correct?
For, for the employee, yes, yeah.
And that's one thing as well, just to clarify.
Correct.
So you save, you save the copay, you might save three hours of sitting in a eel and going up early. That's, I think it's a nice option.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Policy, we will add resolution first read provisions for zero zero six, zero zero six point one, one five zero two two zero three three five three three seven six zero six six one zero nine one three and zero zero four V O G dash two. I do have a few things, but since this is first read, would you prefer that I share them with her and they come back to us with revised? She's that. Are you sure you don't want to go through each and everyone right now? What, what is she doing? Come on. They are, simple, simple things, not changing the topic. So I will do that, and then you'll get the updates in your access.
So just so the board is aware, with Ms. Keating leaving, I am taking policy away from Burge and Allezza, it will not be under his area anymore. He is going to pick up the whole testing piece and become the district coordinator. So beginning July one, I will be doing policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Schuster?
For this special education committee, tonight we'll have a resolution to approve a settlement agreement, and that will be in the consent agenda. And then we have a presentation, the special education department.
Thank you. Okay, so good evening. I'm here tonight to present an update on the special education department, especially in light of the different things going on in the district, specifically the ATSI and of course our, our budget, our ongoing budget concerns and initiatives. This first slide that I'm going to share with you just highlights the current initiatives that we're working on in the department. The first is that we are updating the existing special education procedural manual. So the district already has a pretty extensive procedural manual that was developed before I got here, just needs to be updated. And this is a manual that has already been distributed throughout the district and is maintained in all of the buildings, and to my knowledge, all the employees received a copy under the former director. We're also conducting, I, I have here a historical overview of the special education litigation, approximately ten years worth of litigation, we're gonna take a look at in a moment. We'll be, we are working on developing a professional development plan. There, a plan exists right now, we're really looking to enhance the plan that exists to better address the current needs of the district. We're working on community outreach efforts, and lastly, we're looking at budget and fiscal considerations. Many of these initiatives, like I said, mirror the objectives detailed in the ATSI action So the first, I'm not gonna go through all of these, but the, the first slide there highlights all of the contents of the current procedural manual and some of the.
Sharon, I'm, I'm just gonna ask, right there, I want word to understand that we do have a procedural manual. We have had this manual in place for the past several years now. It is updated when each new director comes in and when there are changes in special ed law. The manual has been distributed prior to Sharon coming here to our principals and our special education staff members. So it is quite extensive, and I think what is important in Sharon's slide here is that you just take a look at the contents that are in that manual, and they follow, you know, federal idea guidelines. So I think that's a really important piece, because a lot of times you're feeling like we don't have procedures in place. We have procedures in place, and I, I believe Sharon talked about continual training of our staff is essential in order for them to understand and implement these procedures.
Thank you, Dr. Kieran. And just to, just to add a few things to that, it, it's important to understand the very fluid nature of special education and that this, this manual is ever-changing, because the law is always changing, legislation is always moving forward, and even probably the most dynamic component in all of this is case law, which every day is evolving, and all of that is influencing legislation and what we're doing in special education departments across the country, for that matter, in a greater country. So our goal is to continue to update this in my department, and then we're going to train the administrators and all the staff on the updates, and then distribute the manual again to all the employees. The principals will present to their staff, I will present to the special education teachers, and me, myself, and the executive team will present to the principals. This next slide is a, an overview of our litigation complaints from 2010 until the present time. The thing that I, that I'm very interested in having you, I think, focus on are the trends. So if you look at the trends from 2010 through, in particular, 2000, all the way through 2019, there's an average of about fifteen lawsuits per year. Some years were heavier in lawsuits than others. We have identified a correlation in some of these numbers, which I'm gonna mention in, in a moment. In addition to the number of. working on a part-time basis per diem while the board and the district looked for a new special education director. The good news is that this year, there's been a significant reduction in, straight across, from the number of complaints through compensatory ed and attorney fees. And of course, we're hoping that we continue to keep our expenses at a minimum as far as litigation. And I'm going to talk to you guys about how we're looking to do that and how we've accomplished to already have a dramatic reduction. So what we've been doing is extracting information from that litigation. I've gone through the 37 cases from last year and the seven cases from this year pretty extensively, as well as probably 50 additional cases that were sort of available to you and lingering in my central office location. The first thing that we've done is continue to identify patterns within these complaints. Problem areas with programming, paperwork, and procedures, which I'm going to talk again about in a moment. Focus on areas among the attorneys for plaintiffs. So what we've come to realize, what I've come to realize is that the parent attorneys tend to focus on areas in patterns. And as I recognize where they're going to focus, we can then, it starts as a reaction, but then we can use it to proactively, preemptively prevent future litigation. By now, and I'll just give you an example, there was a phase where everything was about speech and language. So every complaint had to do with an undetected speech and language impairment. So we got ahead of that and we started to talk to the staff and train our special education staff and work with our speech and language pathologists on really making sure that we're not missing anything. So I think it's important for us to keep looking at the complaints and really analyzing what they look like, but also what the attorneys are presenting during resolution questions. The next is unnecessary demands for independent evaluations. That's another thing that has gone on, and I think myself and my predecessor have tried to really reduce that. And you know, there's been a significant reduction since I've been here in the number of independent evaluations that we improve as a district. And what that means to those of you who aren't familiar is that when the attorneys come in, oftentimes, they ask for an evaluation outside of our evaluative team. And that's very costly. It could cost anywhere from $4,000 to $10,000 per student to have independent evaluations done. And if they do the whole gamut, which sometimes they ask for, you could be looking at $15,000 just for testing. And quite frankly, I think we have an excellent evaluation team in the district right now. We're short on psychologists, God knows, but the people who we're contracting with are very good, and the remaining psychologists that we have onboard is very good. All of our speech and language people are very good. So it's very frustrating when they go outside and ask for independent, but the law allows them to do that. And the district cannot tell them no if they insist on getting independent. It is part of procedural safeguards, allows them to do that. So it's a lot of work on our end to kind of negotiate that out of a settlement. The next is establishment of guidelines for settlement agreements, and I think this has been very practical. The first is limitations placed on funds spent on technology devices. So all of the current resolutions we have, how much money can be spent on computers in a defined amount of time? So maybe $5,000 toward technology over the life of the compensatory education fund, which is good because what we were seeing years and years ago was that people were buying a new computer every year and they want $4,000, $5,000 computers. So they were running through the funds very quickly. And our goal is, even though we award these funds to these people because, you know, the district has accepted some ownness and liability, the goal is to manage the funds so that any remaining funds come back to the district. And we have been fortunate to receive many funds back into the district over the course of the past year and a half. The next is the elimination of third-party trust management of funds. So the district had been historically allowing a third-party, two third-party agencies to manage the compensatory ed funds, which one, costs the district money because they cost us money to manage, they cost us a fee, it costs us a fee to manage the money. And secondly, we don't have any discretion over how the money's spent. So anything that comes through my office in terms of a comp ed request for spending is scrutinized by myself, and we approve or disapprove, and then we have to substantiate that decision with the parents and sometimes the attorneys. But again, the goal is always to make sure that we manage that money responsibly. So the money is staying here, there's been no money put in trust since I came aboard. The next is clarification in language. So what we wanted to do, school code allows us to substitute name brands. So what we find is that a lot of families want like Bose everything, or Apple everything. So what we've done is we've written into, and our attorneys have been really excellent with helping me with all of this because I couldn't write the legal language that they're writing, that allows us to really negotiate and then substitute brands. So instead of, I don't know, $700 Bose headset, we'll get a $75, I don't know, some of the Panasonic headphone. And that's been very cost-saving to the district for comped funds. And the last is limitations placed on funds spent on post-secondary education. We are not allowing students to go through degree programs with compensatory ed funds. That was done years ago. We unfortunately, we're still paying for some colleges for degree programs. That said, we do pay for vocational education and training for these students. So that is allowed to come out of comped, but we don't pay for college programming. The last thing on this slide is the formalization of process surrounding litigation. So one is, we're continuing to really maintain accurate records. I think that that probably started a few years ago, I mean, this date probably started in 2014, 15, where the department really started to keep track of things. And so we have much more comprehensive files now. The next is district management of compensatory funds, which I already mentioned. The next is team meetings to increase accountability, which I've spoken to you guys about in the past, where we have the teams come in and we speak to them about litigation so they understand the root cause of the litigation. And just so you guys understand, because you guys get the summary from me every month, part of what you see isn't entirely, is not an entirely accurate picture of what led to the litigation, it's what the attorneys, the opposing counsel have based the claims on. But it could quite frankly be something as simple as they're aggravated that their student was suspended, or kicked off the bus, or denied participation in a dance, or a field trip. Typically, more, much more typical than not, is that the parent is frustrated about something other than what you guys are seeing in those summaries. But those summaries are what allows for legal substantiation of the claim. Does that make sense to you all? I don't put that in the summary because sometimes I'm not even certain why the parent went to an attorney. All we can do is try to minimize what the attorneys find in terms of finding us liable for something. And the last is dissemination of resolution meetings outcomes. So that just means after our resolution sessions, we present a summary to the teams so that we can learn from, learn from the outcome and hopefully moving forward, avoid a similar suit. The next slide is professional development, which again is very important. And since I've been here, we've done a lot of professional development. Dr. Kirian, last year at the principals retreat, at the team retreat this summer, she brought in Sweet Stevens and they did a fantastic job. It was very comparable to the Lehigh Law Conferences that I've attended. They did a really excellent job. I just think we need to continue to do that because as we all know, and every principal that stood before you earlier, buy-in takes time, and it takes a lot of time to shift a culture. So to change everybody's opinions about how we do things and have everybody take ownness for special education is going to take time and ongoing professional development. We did invite PDE and Patton to do an audit, which I've told you about before. I'm going to talk about those recommendations super quickly on the next slide. We are in the process of developing an internal IEP monitoring team. This was actually the suggestion of Dr. Kirian, and I think it's a fantastic idea. So we're going to have some teachers trained to come in and work with us in the summer, and they'll, of course, be compensated, but to really look at our IEPs, not for compliance, but for content. When the state comes in, they don't look for content, they're looking for compliance. When the attorneys come in, they're looking at content. So we really need to get better at looking at content. And then we can use the teachers on a yearly basis to help out some of these files so that we can draw from them, learn from them, and then share their information out with the rest of the district teachers. The last area is targeted training for teaching principals, and this will be a multi-year professional development plan. But the areas that I know are in imminent need of being addressed are the pre-referral process, the evaluation process, writing defensible IEPs, progress monitoring, compliance, disability eligibility categories, placement decisions, and passive restraint behavioral intervention training. That's the safe crisis management training, that's a big one, it's important, very important for the district, but it's a very extensive training process. It takes about 12 hours to get full certification. So we're, we struggle to try to find time to train staff, because it's hard to put 12 hours together to train people and not take away from the other trainings that are also very critical to the operations of the district. So we're going to continue to work on a plan to do that for next year. The next slide is the PDE and Patton findings, I'm not going to run through all this, because basically what PDE and Patton found are ways that we can improve upon our own IEP writing and evaluation processes. So that's what this slide really is, you can read it at your own leisure, I'm definitely not going to read through this now. But again, it's guidance for me in working with the staff. The next slide highlights our efforts in community outreach. We are going to be creating, and I've met with members of the community already, a parent advocacy committee. We will meet quarterly. We're also developing a parent advisory team. We're hoping that that team will be comprised of people who are familiar enough with procedural safeguards to be able to advise parents on what they should do and how they can handle situations when they become frustrated or uncertain about special education, rather than going to an attorney. Because the goal is to build trust within the community so that they come to us and they don't go to an attorney. Often, many times, since I've been here, I've met with parents who if only I had gone to them before they went to the attorney, I think we could have resolved things without the need for litigators. But the problem is that once the parent attorneys kind of get in there, they don't release them back, and then they just keep them. So if we can get them to come to us first, and I think through the development of a parent team, it might start to facilitate that level of trust that we need to really affect future change. The next is community agency partnership. So I will be meeting with all of the community agencies, we've already reached out to them, they're coming in for a training on our evaluation process, and in particular, our pre-evaluation process, so that they understand how Scranton is doing things and they don't jump to evaluation. Because that's an area that we still have a lot of challenges, where parents write letters for us to test our students, and if they do that, then by law, we have to test. So we're, again, we're trying to educate everyone that has a relationship with the district, who have any, all the stakeholders, the agencies, the parents, the students, everybody. The next is an open house at Electric City Academy. We had an open house last year, but it was for other districts, so we're going to hold two this year. One will be for other districts so that they can come and see the facility, because it has a lot to offer, and I do think it's uncomparably the best around. And then another one for the parents, a lot of parents have asked for that, and I think it's important to offer that to them. The next is an update on our website.
Excuse me, so do you have a date set for an open house?
I'm sorry.
I apologize, it scared you.
I'm so grossed I lied.
You have my question as well.
I'm sorry, do you have a date set? And if you do, I mean, we've never been over there, I mean, three or four years ago, when it first opened, we were supposed to have a meeting scheduled there, and then we were told it wasn't ready, and then we were told again it wasn't ready. But I think it'd be great if the coordinate open house would have our meeting, so.
Yeah.
And I know any of the parents there, they can actually come and participate in our meeting.
I think that would be fantastic, and I think you guys who haven't seen it will be really pleasantly surprised by how really well-done it is.
I have my own personal experience, so.
Yeah, it's really, it's very impressive. I'm very, as someone who's new to Scranton, I'm very impressed. I've never been to a center that is as nice as that. I don't want to be quite about that. The next is the dissemination of the program information. So again, last year I showed you guys, we made those trifolds. We have to get better at distributing them. And again, that's kind of a shift because it's a new piece to our process. So we have them, and the people who receive them are appreciative to have them, but we haven't been really diligent in making sure they get passed out at every meeting and during registration. So we have to get better at that. And the last is a parent night presentation. So I'm going to have a presentation, just an overview on special education for the community at Scranton High School, more than likely Scranton High School, where we'll invite the public to come in so that we can present an overview of what special education is, how it operates, and what we have in terms of programming available to the students in the district. The next slide is budget and fiscal considerations, and we're always looking at different ways to save money. I know that special education is a very costly program. It's a very costly program everywhere, and I know that we don't get enough funds to cover it, but we are working on that. The first is to reduce costs associated with contracting employees. In an effort to do that, I've already been in negotiations with our contractors, and they're very aware of Scranton's position. And I have to say that they have been very amenable to adjusting their pricing for us, which is very surprising because they've come down pretty significantly in some instances. And last year, they wouldn't budge. But this year, when I said we're going to have to look for other vendors because we just can't afford this anymore, they came back and they offered us lower rates. So I'm very happy with that. In addition, we're always looking to restructure assignments based on changing caseloads so that we're maximizing our staff. And we, if we don't need contracted people, then we, you know, we will let them go. We do have a few contracted people that I keep month to month so that we can take a pause if we have to, if we need a contract. The next is analysis of potential cost benefit of hiring versus contracting. And this is something that we've all talked about before. The speech and language pathologist, which Mr. Laffey mentioned earlier, the psychologists and the personal care assistants are very costly to the district. The next slide is going to demonstrate, I think it's the next slide is going to demonstrate that. We've looked at all of those numbers before, and we can look at them again, but I'm always looking at whether it would be more cost-effective. And I think before we rushed to make that decision, and I know Dr. Kirian agrees, we were waiting to see if our numbers changed at all. Because we don't want to hire if the numbers are going to change. I know you guys have expressed concern about that before. But if our numbers hold steady and in fact grow, which has been the trend, which is two slides away, then it would at some point probably be more financially beneficial to the district to go to hire as opposed to continue to contract some of these people. The next is expanding the center-based program, which, again, thank you guys for allowing us to add those two new classrooms. They'll be open in September. This will allow us to increase outside district enrollment, which is going to continue to offset center costs. And at this point, the center really does pay for itself, which is really great for Scranton, because as you'll see in one of the slides that are coming up, if we take our, just our Scranton students out of there and put them in programs to meet their needs, it'll be in excess of $7 million just for student programming. So it is really great that Scranton has that program. The last is the expansion of access billing to try to bring back more revenue through access to the district. We do now have a full-time access billing clerk, she's doing a great job, she's learning her job, she's working with the state, and she's really working to increase billing revenue. We now bill for PCA's and we also bill for psychologists, and that was not being done in the past. The next slide is just that comparison, and I'm not going to go through this whole slide, but you can just, if you just simply look at the annual salary of the contracted in blue versus the annual salary of the Scranton School District employee in the same position, and that includes benefits and retirement, it's a dramatic difference. This is based on the number of contracted people we have right now, so there's 10 speech and language contracted, 10 PCA's contracted, two behavior tests. You can read this for yourself later, but it would, again, if these numbers hold steady and we have the need for these employees, it would be more cost-effective for the district to hire as opposed to continue to contract.
I think significantly on that page, the last blue column that says overall cost and the SSC overall cost, and then the last column differential, you'll see the difference of what we're paying by using a provider as opposed to hiring our own staff.
Okay, and again, you guys have seen this slide as well, it just illustrates the fact that special education is continuing on an upward trend in terms of student, identified student population. And that makes all of this very challenging because we're continuing to see growth. That number's already higher than 21.1 right now, and I anticipate it continuing to grow. Certainly, I don't, I don't know that we're going to dramatically-
and the SSD overall cost, and then the last column differential, you'll see the difference of what we're paying by using a provider as opposed to hiring our own staff.
Okay. And, and again, you guys have seen this slide as well. It just illustrates the fact that special education is continuing on an upward trend in terms of student, identified student population. And that makes all of this very challenging because we're continuing to see growth. That number's already higher than 21.1 right now. And I anticipate it continuing to grow. Certainly, I don't, I don't know that we're in dramatic decreases at any time in the foreseeable future. So it's, it's, it's a challenge to continually try to limit costs when the population and the needs are growing. The next slide is just Monticello growth. And, and again, you've seen that slide before as well. It just, it just shows the number of students in the program. Now, these are the students that I'm talking about in the next slide. So we took those 135 students and we put them out into placements. And these placements are reasonable. We have many districts, or many placements that exceed $74,252. But just based on those average rates, it would be around $7 million. If we were to shut down Monticello today, it would be $7 million in cost to provide programming to our own Scranton students. And that's it. Does anybody have any questions for me?
That was really enlightening. Thank you, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your information.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Sharon. Sharon, thank you. That was an excellent presentation and much of the material is not new to the board members. But I think sometimes, you know, we forget where we are in trying to manage the special ed department. So my suggestion would be if you could keep that PowerPoint close by so when we talk about these things, you'll have a reference to where we are and how much progress we made up to this point. Director McAndrew, venue relation.
Okay. Tonight we'll have a resolution to award the 2019 General Supply Bid. We'll also have a resolution to award the 2019 Janitorial Supplies Bid. Mr. Laffey, I have a quick question. So I actually looked at the resolution that goes along with the Janitorial Supplies Bid. I thought the direction we're going to move in was look for like a global provider for the chemicals where they, I know we have the specialty where, you know, they can wear household step powder for us if you do its cost, or they can set up systems that distribute or dispense the product so it's not done by fake pouring, which is expensive. What did they entertain a bid or did happen or what?
So with the summer approaching, I think the busiest time a lot for our maintenance, you'll notice that specifically on the janitorial bid, a lot of those products that you're referencing are on a as-needed basis, on a drawn-out basis, for our purchasing volume as we explore that exact system that you're talking about. So to get us through, there's no delay, they need a school to prepare for the start of next school year. That's why that's specifically written that way. It has an as-needed drawdown while we look to go to an universal system as you speak.
All right, so that system will be fresh. Is that what we're saying or you're saying?
It will be coming very soon. We, we have not started the process of bidding and service yet at this time.
So that's a rewarding for how, like, in time, during time.
Well, it's for a year, but it's, it's for an as-needed basis. We can switch it out.
Okay, no, thanks for clarifying. You do have a need.
Sorry.
And while we're on that subject, the same thing occurs with paint. And that's something that we've done, we've always done, right?
We didn't always do it. Probably within the last year or four years, yes, it's on an as-needed basis. So when products come off, they need to be done. We're not purchasing, we're purchasing at that time. We're not warehousing, storing gallons and gallons of paint.
Okay, so yeah, for the last couple of years, we're putting that out there, we're getting that place locked in.
We lock it in for a year and as we need it, we can access it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll also have a resolution to award the 2019 lumber bid, a resolution to award the 2019 medical bid, a resolution to award the 2019 music bid, a resolution to award the 2019 paint and painting supplies and equipment bid, a resolution to award, to award 2019 art supplies, and a resolution to award the 2019 sports equipment bid. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. The other?
So, Mr. Laffey, with all of these bids, and I, I know the, you know, general supplies are going, one place, janitorial supplies go on another, the paint, paintings, art supplies, and that, it's district-wide.
Yes, district-wide.
And it's being spread out district-wide?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And the lumber bid, we're buying lumber for?
It is, that's exclusively for the industrial arts classes.
And so, or, or sports supplies bid, does that number seem large? Can you give us a rundown on where we're purchasing there for sports supplies?
I believe it seems consistent with prior years. I mean, it's specifically sports equipment, maybe sports specific, scorebooks, sports specific, athletic gear, baseballs, basketballs, the things that I mentioned.
No, no, like extremely large purchases, just small items across the board?
Correct.
Okay. And these, all of these bids are, and all of these numbers are consistent across the year?
From one year to the next?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's no exaggerated increases that we've seen. I mean, there's fluctuations in prices every year, but it's the order that's consistent with best practice. The paper bid, there was a higher request for more reads of paper this year. However, when we checked with the supplier, we have a little bit excess from our prior order, so we scaled that back down. We are lacking in price and if the year rises where, you know, we are short, we can sell access that at this award price.
Okay, yeah, just making sure they're comparable across, at least the last few years.
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you feel as though, have these still been impacted by the vendor reach out from the previous year where things kind of bounced back to where we were?
Well, no, I think, I mean, this is the most competitive price you, you will receive. So I, I think that, you know, the reach out was very positive and beneficial and I think we're probably recognizing some of that with this and get going out competitively for these prices. And it's important to note that we're, we're, we're awarding at an individual high on a basis, so not one company's getting the janitorial bid, they're getting what they were lowest for of those spiders. So I think that's saving us the most money there.
That's to be a tremendous amount more, so that's great.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you. Anything else? Mrs. Dixon, I'd like to make a recommendation based on Mr., it was, I think, Mr. McAndrew, that we have a meeting at Electric City Academy. I'm going to ask for the August 5th meeting prior to school starting. Can we change the location of that meeting? And will everybody be okay with that?
Schedule the open house.
Well, we'll schedule, yeah, we'll schedule the open house and, and your fourth meeting, right?
Sounds great.
Sounds good. August 5th, Virginia, Electric City Academy. Okay.
Do you want us to have the work session? No, no, I'll do it in August, right?
Yes, is that okay?
We don't have, we don't have a regular scheduled meeting, so do you want that to be a special meeting?
I thought on my calendar, I have August 5th as a board meeting. No?
No, I thought it was the, we go toward more toward the opening of school, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That was the discussion we had around the August meeting. That we weren't, the reason we didn't need an August was because things might not be ready, even though we talked about the potential of adding August meetings.
We usually call a special meeting sometime in the middle of August to the end of August for some items, so we can certainly have a meeting that night.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be till September.
That's fine.
Is that fine?
Sure.
Okay. How about our September meeting at Electric City Academy?
I just want to add one. I think, there's no auditorium there? There's a gym and a cafeteria?
I've already spoken to Mr. Basilika. So what is the date, Virginia?
September, is it the 3rd? Or do you have your calendar?
I, I have September 3rd as the next board meeting.
Okay, September 3rd, ECA.
That would be a Tuesday.
Right.
That's Tuesday, September 3rd.
Okay. Virginia, you'll do your magic there, right? Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have the motion to adjourn?
I just have one quick thing under due business and I won't hold this up like more than half, but I think it's with PSA. I was contacted by Mr. Pedro Ness, who's been a good friend to the district, and they're having a COP season opener for the COVID-19 version for the SSD kids and Hurricane Maria vacancies. And I just got this information maybe about an hour or so, maybe two hours ago, so this is very new. But he was asking that maybe we could put this out on our, on our website and maybe contact our IT department and Mr. Ness specifically. He's the point of contact for this to get the specific details. And I believe he has some things to help our Hurricane Maria vacancies and a lot of Puerto Rican refugees students. So I just thought it was a good public service enough and maybe we could get the specifics hammered out. Mr. Ness and Dr. Kirian, contact him and go through our activity to help a little bit more. The date for that is 6/9/2019 at the Lockall County Stadium. Thank you.
You know, while we're on that subject, last year when we went over for the, to the Lockall and out of the gas, the rail riders didn't say that the district is welcome to reach out to do, to do some events, you know, or whatever. They can say this morning, so did you ever reach out to them?
Robert Newton does reach out to them, yes.
Have they been helping out any of the Scranton kids in things?
Yeah. So 6/9 is what this is. It's just. Okay, the motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make motion to adjourn. A second.
All right. So we can move right into the board meeting. We already have a pledge of allegiance to the National Anthem, so we'll, we'll start the board meeting June 3rd with the roll call. Right?
Yes, please. Mr. Forthwick?
Present.
Mr. Duffy?
Present.
Ms. Gomart?
Present.
Mr. Lush?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Popel?
Right.
Mr. Schuster?
Here.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
President.
And then the next thing on this agenda that's revised, we would be honoring, honoring and recognizing Caesar Acosta.
I have that resolution here with my name on it.
Okay.
To the members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton is the recommendation of the Superintendent and Vocational Education Committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas the Skills USA Pennsylvania Championships are state-level competitions for public high school and college students enrolled in trade, technical, and skilled service profession construction, pro-professional instruction programs, including allied health occupations. And whereas Hershey, Pennsylvania is the host site each year for the Skills USA Pennsylvania Conference with leadership events taking place at the conference in Hershey, PA, and skilled competitions are hosted at Lebanon County Exposition Center and various school sites. And whereas Caesar Acosta, a 12th grade student at West Scranton High School and Career Technology Center, was a gold medalist at the Skills USA Pennsylvania Championship in Computer Systems and Cyber Security. And whereas Caesar will be representing Pennsylvania at the National Skills USA Leadership and Skills Conference in Louisville, Kentucky on June 28th through 20, 24th through 28th, 2019, and will be attending Johnson College in the fall for computer information technology. And now therefore be it resolved that the official congratulations of the Scranton School Board is extended to Caesar Acosta, his mother, Yanet Agro, the administration, and all of his teachers at West Scranton High School and the Career Technology Center. Respectfully submitted.
Other question?
I just want to say something on the question. This, this is a big deal. I don't know if you guys realize that. But Skills USA, Skills USA is a national organization that focuses on content areas. I have culinary kids that participate. I wish I had the opportunity to participate, but it's usually done first in-house. You compete a junior class and then you move on and compete at the district level with maybe 15 other vocational schools in the area. And you achieve gold at that, and then you went to states and achieved gold, which is, this is monumental. And then now he's going to go and compete nationally. And then after that, he can compete at Worlds if he's successful. So this, this is bigger than people realize. This is a, this is a big achievement for this shot. I don't know if he's present tonight, but.
I think he was here earlier, but I don't, I don't remember now. This is a long night.
If he was here this long, he deserves a second round.
But I, I think he did. I know. Caesar. Well, we'll have to get him for a picture.
I'll, I'll see him tomorrow.
But, and.
Congratulate.
Congratulate. And I also.
Put it down on the website. Send it to.
I also want to know in, in, I'd like to know, in addition to Caesar's accomplishment, we had seven gold medal, district medalists, we had seven gold, four silver, and three bronze medalists from our, our two high schools. And I'm just going to take a moment for a little CTC commercial. CTC also hosted this year for the first time the NEIU Scholar of the Year Award and had a student recognized, Joe Kessler from North Lebanon High School. And we had three students from our district recognized, Leonard Lady from Scranton High School, Emma Crisco from West Scranton High School, and Kyler Pip from Lincoln Jackson Academy. So I want to congratulate all of them as well. And the night of CTC's graduation, which was a long and hot night, Mr. McAndrew can attest, it was a wonderful celebration. But I, I do want to note that at the end of the very long program where everyone was celebrated and their families were cheering and taking photos, one young woman approached the stage and thanked my, my colleagues and me for our, our work at CTC and our support of the programs there. And she was very charming and just said it with hello. And when she walked away, all of my colleagues were very impressed. And so I did a little research on the CTC website and found out that her name is Zoe Kermitis. She was student of the month last month in May. She is in the, just graduated from the Protective Services Program and was recently inducted into the National Technical Honor Society. So I didn't know her name at the time, but I, I just wanted to tell her she was, she really impressed everyone there that night and it was a very kind gesture. So, thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Forthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Gomart?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Popel?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Magnifer?
Communication to the board.
Okay, executive session was held this evening, June 3rd, 2019, to discuss labor relations and school safety. We also have an addition to the consent agenda as long as everyone approves for the out-of-state field trip for Scranton High, item D4.
So you're adding that to the consent?
Adding that to consent, yes.
Put it in there.
Okay. And we also add, like Scranton.
Are we adding the origin here to the consent as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Who is that?
F2.
F2.
F2. That a, is this more? I believe it is. Solicitor's report.
Madam President, to be the most popular person in the room, I have no report to say anything.
Thank you, Solicitor Ali. Superintendent's report.
To be the second most popular. I have none. Excuse me.
Thank you. Your report, Ms. Gomart.
I will only mention that registration is open for the school leadership conference in October, so check your emails, there's information.
Thank you, Ms. Gomart. At this time, the board welcomes public comment. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. Union officials will be allowed four minutes and your time may not be passed to any speaker. When your time is up, we kindly ask that you finish your sentence and wrap up your sentence. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the board requests no yelling from the audience, no moving or other form of support or non-support to be used. The Board will not tolerate derogatory remarks or personal attacks against any Board member, administrator, or any person. This is a time for the public leader. Your comment, debate, and dialogue is discouraged at this time. Our first speaker this evening is Luann, Luann? Sorry.
Good evening. Luann, can you hear? President thirty-two PJ? I don't often come and speak in front of everybody and I'm often inspired to do so, but I felt the need tonight. And I want to implore you to hire leadership for the Maintenance Department. We need it. The fact that you want to combine this department with the IT department to save money does not make sense to me. They're both beasts, these two departments, and they deserve to have someone who has the time to devote to each department. If you take it and you split it up the way you want to do, then IT suffers a little bit, maintenance suffers a little bit, and we don't have the leadership that we need. So, I'm begging for leadership. I don't know about the IT department, but we need it in maintenance desperately. We also, the Union Thirty-two PJ did not appreciate the fact that on, uh, May twenty-first, Tuesday, Election Day, we opened up the newspaper and saw that the Waste Management was put out for bad. We didn't appreciate that. Uh, you could have saved your time because you're not allowed to do that according to our CPA. Uh, there is no subcontracting in that, and I would refer you to read Article Six with the agreement between Thirty-two PJ and the Scranton School District. And I want to end by saying, we need to start fixing problems in our building rather than letting them fester. We let things happen, and it builds, and it builds, and it builds. And, uh, maybe if we start fixing the problems, then we can save ourselves from being on the evening news, the morning news, the afternoon news, the front page of the Scranton Times, the second page of the Scranton Times due to issues in our buildings. If we don't fix these leaky pipes and, and broken doors and all of this, and we just let them go and go and go, and I'm not blaming anyone up there tonight, it's been going on for years. Uh, we have pipes leaking in buildings. I know in Scranton High, we are like the Titanic going down. Our, our sprinkler system, bad. You know, it's, it's burst in here and there every time you turn around. We have pumps, we have water heaters, we have this, we have that, they're all gone and shot and no good. And that just leads you back to another reason why we need leadership. We need someone who has the time to devote to coming and finding these problems and bringing them to you so that we can get them fixed. So, we do need some leadership, and that's really, you know, all I have to say, you know all our issues. So, I would hope you would consider helping us out, getting someone to lead us. We need it.
Thank you, Luann. Reverend Eric Vaughn?
Good evening, Directors. Uh, we take this opportunity tonight, uh, on a happy note, to congratulate all of the twenty nineteen graduates from our two city high schools and our students who are going on to college, into the military, into the, into the trades. We're very proud of them. Our union this year awarded six scholarships to students at our two city high schools, and I know on Scranton High School on awards night, uh, on stage, Mr. Coyle announced that there was better than seven million dollars worth of scholarships awarded that night to our, uh, students. Uh, I think we should be very, very proud of that fact, and I wish we'll get some recognition for that accomplishment in the city of Scranton. Uh, I would love it if that would be in the newspaper tomorrow, and also the accomplishment of the students at West. I wasn't going to address this tonight, but, uh, I can't help it. I sat through that presentation a little bit ago. Mr. Hunt's firm, that's a mess. That's an absolute disgrace. That somebody we hired at taxpayer's expense gets up here and tells you that we're not ready to roll, doesn't have costs ready to roll. School has to open in September. Some of our buildings are in dire need of repair. This is unacceptable for anybody to get up here and do what was just done a little while ago. Totally unacceptable. And this taxpayer recommends termination. You were, you were failed tonight by this hire, and this isn't good. What, Willard School needs help now. I think Luann stated the truth a second ago. And for that person to stand up and say what was just said in this room tonight is totally, totally unacceptable. Any other employee would be terminated. And I think it's time, we don't keep throwing good money away and listening to all these excuses. There's, there's just no need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Paige Arstani? I don't know if I'm staying in breakfast?
Yeah. So, my name is Paige Arstani. As you guys heard before, the property next to Wood Ear, that's my house. Um, I have pictures, videos. My entire home was just being damaged. Um, I get damaged on the back, side, front. I have thrown away so much, our entire basement was flooded. Stuff that we've had for years, that I was a kid, is now gone. Um, our deck in the back, we had somebody come to paint it, and he goes, I can't make this. The entire, we lifted up and replaced it, replaced like half of the deck. The entire frame underneath is all ruined. Um, I used to have a sidewalk on the side of the house, all the mulch, all the water. It, everything's just, all I wrote it away. Um, I don't think I should have to clean up the mulch every single time it rains. Only my stuff is being damaged. Um, and it's just my time, energy, money, and I don't think it's fair. And it's not been going on for one year, two years, it's seven years I have been running it up. The city says it's a school, and the school says it's a city. Um, but it just seems like no one's taking any responsibility at all.
We're, we're working on getting that fixed. We, we finally have a plan, um, to get it done. I know that you've been dealing with this for quite some time now, and we're coordinating with the city, and hopefully, uh, before too long, we can get it done. And tonight, I said we would look into our insurance to see if we and the city have a policy that could help with the damages to your home.
Right.
So, I have your number.
Okay.
And I, I will get back to you.
Okay. Um, and the other thing was, you know, I, I mentioned it before, I don't know who it was to, this is my first meeting I've ever actually been to, but even if they can't work out a, a, a solution, even if they wanted to buy my own two for whatever reason, um, but I just, it's literally been seven years since the new school built the properties and tore down some properties next to mine.
This one or the other, seven years ago, since the school was built?
When the new school was built and they bought, it's your properties next to mine, yeah. Um, and when the, um, the engineer came and my dad had asked him, you know, are we going to have this? I think there's going to be runoff, and the engineers, no, no, no. And apparently, I have a copy of the blueprints for the school. I guess in the proposal, they were supposed to put in a drainage system of some sort, and they didn't on the actual blueprint.
And, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm glad you brought that up because that was on my mind when we were talking before, and now I know why. Um, is there, if that was supposed to be part of the original plan and it didn't happen, is there any recourse that way?
If, it depends.
It wasn't in the plan, it wasn't?
It depends if we acknowledged and said that's fine, or if they, um, said it was the plan, just simply didn't do it. We need to research that. I said, we need to research that, because if we pay for it and it's not yet done, I mean, I'm sorry, recording through this, that's terrible. Whatever.
Has everybody seen pictures and videos?
I, I have not. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'd love to get in touch.
A misunderstanding. Did you say that it was supposed to have a drain system, but the plans do not show one?
Correct.
Okay, so that, it wasn't, it just wasn't done. And what the engineers are looking at now is to, um, to put a drain system in and to regrade and to put, um, have the city put a curb in, and they feel like that will make all the difference in the world. So, we are working on it.
Prior to us moving forward, that can we look into those original schematics and see if that was supposed to be part of the original?
What she just said, it was not.
It was dropped by the port, like you said, also, it could have been abandoned or dropped by the port, or, which is one of the other questions.
I, I agree. I think we're trying to, to get back to that, because I even think this came up when Mr. Brazil discussed this. I, I remember scanning the administration building, he was standing by the door, and he was talking about it and everything, and I think that drainage issue came up that night as well.
I reached out to him, no one said anything.
Yeah. And I, I do know he was trying to get the city and the district and everybody to, I mean, I think everybody's been trying.
They even tried, see, I beg, didn't they? The past couple of years, um, they were trying to...
Which I thought was terrible.
Yeah, it did feel like it worked.
Not only was it a sore, it just diverted water down a little bit further and then came pouring.
Understood.
But my, like, my deck is completely ruined, my entire basement. God knows if I am old, I have three children at home. Uh, I just hope that before my house is completely ruined.
Flows away?
Yeah, my steps in the front from all the water are now collapsed. Um, we just keep dishing out money just to kind of put a band-aid on it, I guess.
Well, thank you for coming, and we are working on it, and it's good to put a name and a face together. Thank you.
How about your name?
Thank you. Sir Warren?
Before we move forward, anything else, can we make sure that that wasn't in the original budget?
Yes, I will definitely look this up.
Good to go? Okay, great. Uh, good evening, folks. As always, you're at the Lackey County Department of Community Relations. Uh, we've got a lot of stuff here, and it's quite late, so I'll be brief. Uh, our bike helmet coloring contest is now open for submissions. Um, I think the district actually shared this on social media today, so we appreciate that. Um, basically, it's the same thing we always do, it leads up to our Bike Safety Fair at Dade Park on Saturday, June twenty-second. We're asking for the entries to be in next Monday. I know it's a tight turnaround, uh, please feel free to share with faculty if they want to do some class projects. And of course, with parents and students, uh, they'd be welcome to color in and send it to us. Uh, the contact information is on the back, so it's actually for that way. Uh, we do this every year, it's a great item, we normally get a lot of submissions from district students, so we'd be happy to see it again this year. And of course, our Bike Safety Fair, combined with our Family Fun Day at Dade Park is free and open to the public. Uh, again, it'll be Saturday, June twenty-second, eleven AM to two PM. Please come out, enjoy the park, and check it out. It's a great opportunity to come out at the start of the summer season and see what we have to offer. We also have the schedule from the Electric City Trolley Museum on their special summer excursions. They've got a number of guests riding the trolley at different times over the summer that include Spider-Man, Mickey and Minnie Mouse, and some of the Frozen characters, so leave this with you. Of course, there's trolley runs throughout the summer, basically special events, again, special guests that they have on board. Uh, and later in the year, they've got Santa Claus, they give Easter money earlier in the year. So, if the summertime kids are out of school, this is what they request for, uh, special guests, so check those out if you can. But we've got two information lineups here. One is on the county's Disability Action Committee Workshop. They've coming up on Thursday, June twenty-seventh. We've mentioned this before, this is our formal release about it, though, so it puts everything into a pretty concise context. Really good information regarding the American Disabilities Act and compliance with that for local governments and also businesses, and again, anyone from the district will be welcome to attend. We think it's very useful information. And we also have about, some info about the county's Flood Risk Coalition. It's an effort involving many county departments, but also federal and state emergency management agencies regarding flood risk in Lackey County, particularly with the debut of the Flood Maps that will be coming next year. Uh, it provides a lot of information. We've got a flyer here, we've also got a comprehensive website that provides some interactive tools, uh, to deal with this and to learn more about it. So, I encourage you to check those out. There's a lot more than I can describe now. Uh, all the others, all the items that we have here deal with other Penn State expenses, four-range programming over the summer, and also Lackey County's Parks and Recreation, various camps, clinics, and events that they do. So, there's a whole handful. I'll leave those to you to check out and distribute. If you're looking for good ways to keep students engaged over the summer, physically fit and active, and also continuing to learn, this is a great opportunities. So, please share them, feel free to check them out. Lots of good stuff here to do during the summer months. That's all we have for, thank you.
Thank you. That's it for our public comment this meeting. Do I have a motion? May I have a motion to approve it?
Oops, sorry.
Meeting minutes?
Motion approved.
On the question? Roll call?
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Goodmorton?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Popple?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Fourthwick?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
May I affirm?
Now, we have the consent agenda. Before having, make a motion to approve the consent agenda, does anyone have any concerns on any of the?
Could we please pull E one, approve back porch woods use of Scranton High School?
And also B one?
B as in boy?
B as in boy.
B as in boy one?
Yes.
B one and E one, correct?
Yes.
B as in boy, E as in... Okay. Do we have to add, um, to the agenda, the, the two items that we were going to put on consent, the field trip for Scranton High School?
Before we did?
We did have.
And then you did that, and then the urgent care is on that plus two, is added to that. So, with that being done, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second? Go ahead. On the question? Roll call?
Ms. Goodmorton?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Popple?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Fourthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
May I affirm?
Okay, now where are we being? So, Director Popple, you'll start with B one?
With the, to the members in the Board of Directors, this great school is the city of Scranton, the recommendation of the Superintendent and Budget Finance Committee, the following resolution be considered, the, the list of bill payments in accordance with the bill payment, the probable policy, the approved aspect attached, and move that the orders be drawn upon the treasuries filed June third, five hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. Respectfully submitted.
But second?
Second.
On the question?
On the question, Mr. Lackey, I know I've asked this in the last several meetings. John Menor is also on this bill list again. Is this late bills or is this from other work on this?
It's, uh, as of last month, as we discussed last month, it's late billing, this is the condition.
There's some transition work in this one also, isn't there, with Joyce Carmody, Moran, Mr. Audi?
I believe Mr. Audi's work was hired at our November meeting. These payments, um, encapsulate, I think, the middle of October to the middle of November.
Did the Board receive any of these, the roll calls?
No, I did not, but I'm going to be contacting.
Would you like to see any of the bill calls? Yeah, I would mind seeing them.
Okay. Yep, sorry.
Roll call?
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Popple?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
I can't stand to listen.
Mr. Fourthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Goodmorton?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
May I affirm that one of the two motions passes?
B eight?
B eight. Six.
I have B eight.
There's a question, um...
Yeah, there's a question about...
There's a question about the extension.
Okay, if that can't happen, we didn't have to send you a side copy.
Yeah, I, I have one here.
I think not.
All right. Okay.
I don't have a B6. B6 is a consent.
Yeah, B, okay.
B8.
Uh, to the members of the Board of Scranton School District, it is the recommendation of the Superintendent and Budget Finance Committee that the following resolution be approved, whereas the Scranton School District issued a request for proposals for workers' compensation, TPA services in accordance with professional service bid timeline and where the district received five proposals for the services and now therefore be resolved that the contract for workers' compensation, TPA services be awarded to.
That's a calendar.
Every calendar.
Respectfully submitted.
Do I have a second?
Um, I, I have a question on that. Did we want to cook for the number of three years?
Yes. Yes.
Three years. Second.
On the question?
On the question, Mr. Lepone, I know I've asked this in the last several meetings, John Menor is also on this bill list again. Is this late bills or is this from other work areas?
It's, uh, as of last month, as we discussed last month, it's late billing, this is the conditions.
There's some transition work in this one also, isn't there with Joyce Carmody, Moran, Mr. Audi?
I believe Mr. Audi's firm was hired at our November meeting. These payments encapsulate, I think, the middle of October to the middle of November.
Did the board receive any of these, the roll calls?
No, I did not, but I'm going to be contacted.
Would you like to see any of the bill logs? Yeah, I would mind seeing them.
Okay. Yep. Sorry.
Roll call.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Popple?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Ferber?
Nina.
To the members of the Board of Directors, it is the recommendation of the Superintendent and Budget Finance Committee that the following resolution be approved, whereas the Scranton School District, Kevin Carden, Cardenack, property address 18 Conroy Avenue, lab 157, 157, 19010008, new tax, new real estate tax assessment of $12,000, effective date 1, 1, 2019. Therefore be resolved, as your initial Board of Directors approved the, approved in property assessment as negotiated between all the parties involved, respectfully submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question?
Roll call.
Can I, pardon me, I'm sorry, can we get an explanation of the impact on the district, please?
This appeal will cost the district 1,100, this settlement, I should say, will cost the district $1,143. However, in challenging it, um, the likelihood of success is slim and the cost of litigation is about triple that savings. And it's also difficult to get an appraiser, um, to do an appraisal on a residential at this time. So, that's the reason for the recommendations.
And why do you feel the likelihood of success is slim?
Because the neighboring property is similar in, to the reduced amount that they're seeking. So, the comparables worked against us slightly.
Okay. Thank you. I, I understand all of that and it certainly is reasonable, but I, I continue to be concerned that we are reassessing this county of one property at a time and we lose when that happens. That's not a revenue neutral proposition. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
You?
I'm sorry, didn't hear. Uh, yes.
Mr. Popple?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
Mr. Borthwick?
No.
Mr. Duffy?
No.
Ms. Good Martin?
No.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Mr. Popple?
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Dixon?
No.
Six negative three affirmative, motion passed.
Hey.
Yep.
To the members of the Board of Directors, it is the recommendation of the Superintendent and Budget Finance Committee that the following resolution be approved, whereas the Norfolk Southern Rail, Railway Corp. Company submitted a petition to the single tax office on March 10, 2018, under the local taxpayer bill of rights, and where the petition is seeking a refund of $20,233.80 in real estate tracks for tax, whereas the railroad right of way is a tax exempt property and whereas representatives for the railroad have offered a discount settlement of $18,144.24, if paid within 10 days of board approval, therefore be resolved, the Scranton School Board of Directors approved the settlement of $18,144.24 to more fork, Southern Railroad Company, respectfully submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question?
So, as with the last one, then, Ms. Lepone can deal with it as well?
Yeah, um, in, in this case, um, this is a, a tax that was charged to the railroad that was not, not an appropriate tax. And the railroad has gone through all the municipalities around this entire region and, um, has sued for the money's back. Um, the likelihood of success in this case is slim to none frankly. And the discount is as good as we will get, so our firm is recommending that rather than litigate it, spend the money and likely lose, we accept the settlement and avoid the litigation costs. Does that answer any of your questions?
Roll call.
Mr. Popple?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Ferber?
C number one, members of the Board of School Directors of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the Superintendent and Community Relations Committee that the following resolution is approved, whereas Lockona College was just advertised at Scranton Memorial Stadium and whereas the agreement for advertising commences on September 1st, 2019, and expires September 1st, 2021. It is understood that the advertiser will comply with all provisions contained in the standard conditions document and whereas the advertising fee for the front and backside edge of the store board is $28,000 for 2019 through 2021. Payments for the Scranton School Board can be made in full or in four installments of $7,000. Now, therefore be resolved that the Scranton School District Board of Education hereby approves the advertising agreement between the Scranton School District and Lockona College for advertising use at Ballard Field, at Veterans Memorial Stadium, respectfully submitted.
Do I have a second?
A second.
On the question?
Is this pricing in line with the advertising plan that was approved previously?
Yes.
And this is great news?
Yes. Roll call.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Ms. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Popple?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Ferber?
C number one, members of the Board of School Directors of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the Superintendent and the Community Relations Committee that the following resolution be approved, whereas the Lockona College was just advertised at Scranton Memorial Stadium and whereas the agreement for advertising commences on September 1st, 2019, and expires September 1st, 2021. It is understood that the advertiser will comply with all provisions contained in the standard conditions document and whereas the advertising fee for the front and backside edge of the store board is $28,000 for 2019 through 2021. Payments for the Scranton School Board can be made in full or in four installments of $7,000. Now, therefore be resolved that the Scranton School District Board of Education hereby approves the advertising agreement between the Scranton School District and Lockona College for advertising use at Ballard Field, at Veterans Memorial Stadium, respectfully submitted.
Do I have a second?
A second.
On the question?
Is this pricing in line with the advertising plan that was approved previously?
Yes.
And this is great news?
Yes. Roll call.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Popple?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Nina Ferber?
Okay, so now.
Should have backcourt hoops, I think it is, right?
Which one?
Um, so, there's the one, actually, I operate.
B1 was pulled.
But.
No, we have the operations one?
Yeah, there's one for, uh, resolution to approve the payment for work that has already been done, for the, prepare for the design.
What's the number on that?
E5. It's the one that E1 was pulled. Didn't you just give us that one for June? Yeah.
So, that's your five.
So, we're going to do E1 first or?
Well, E1 is under health and safety. And athletic. That's your two. Oh, okay. But do you want it to be one first?
Yeah, might as well, go with one.
Members of the Board of School Directors of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the Superintendent and the Operations Committee that the following resolution be approved, whereas a local AAU basketball program, backcourt hoops, has requested the use of Scranton High's, High School Gymnasium for 2,000 man's summer season, God bless. And whereas backcourt hoops is charged rental fees of $1,700 for the use of Scranton High School Gymnasium for scheduled games from the time period of Monday, June 3rd, 2019 until Thursday, July 18th, 2019. And whereas in exchange for the reduced rental fees for the summer, summer season, the Scranton School District will receive an entry fee for two teams for the entire summer season hosted by backcourt hoops in Scranton, Pennsylvania. This is roughly, uh, about a thousand dollar value to the student athletes of Scranton, of the Scranton School District. Whereas, so that no scheduling conflicts occur, back, backcourt hoops is to provide a detailed summer season schedule to the administration of Scranton High School. And whereas backcourt hoops is to provide proof of a certificate of insurance, provability, and purposes. And whereas backcourt hoops is responsible for the safety and conduct of its participants and spectators. And whereas adequate adult supervision must be provided by backcourt hoops and the Scranton School District must be reinforced for any and all damages to the Scranton School District equipment or faculties. Whereas access to the faculty shall be limited to specified areas of Scranton High School Gymnasium and whereas altercations, alter, yeah, alter, alterations, whereas alterations to Scranton High School Gymnasium is prohibited. And whereas Scranton School District all the equipment should not be moved from the faculty or loaned to backcourt hoops. And there, and now therefore be resolved, backcourt hoops is allowed to use the Scranton High School Gymnasium for games during the 2019 summer season, respectfully submitted.
On the question?
What does it cost us to post backcourt hoops? I, I, how many games are we talking about? How many days? Is there any additional cost incurred by the district in, in doing this? I mean, I see that there's a thousand dollar sort of exchange for our students, which is great, um, but has, has $1,700 offset the cost of, for, would you please comment on that?
Yeah, we have a rental agreement that's, uh, in full, uh, resolution to reserve gym per night, but then for, for everything that we get for our students, then we take off that rental agreement to give back to our students. And we got a price of value of around $1,700, then a few dollars.
And, and they do provide an insurance policy, if there's any damage to our property, they have to pay for it.
During that span, it is shut down for about, I'm going to say about 10 days for graduation exercises at Scranton High School. As far as the hours of their use, you're saying it's evening hours. Um, does that affect any of our programs, meaning the summer trainings and such that the kids go through? That's, before we even did this, we played with the administration of Scranton High School and Mr. E. R. S.
And about, how many days are we talking about here?
I'm going to say roughly, from that time span, I'm going to say roughly about 12 to 15 nights.
So, just so I'm understanding what you're saying, the 12 to 15 nights would cost us And about how many days are we talking about here?
I'm gonna say roughly, from that time span, I'm gonna say roughly about twelve to fifteen nights.
So, just so I'm understanding what you're saying, the twelve to fifteen nights would cost us about twenty-seven hundred dollars. There's sort of an in-kind exchange of a thousand dollars, which gets us to the seventeen.
Yeah, we always take off.
Okay. And is, just so I'm clear, is this a for-profit business versus some sort of organization? I just don't know much about sports in general.
It's, it's just made use of.
Okay.
So each kid is charged a fee to play?
The teams, the teams are charged a fee to play, but Scranton, our, our district has two teams that's given free.
Okay.
So it's for all over the year.
So, so what I mean, your teams, teams from our district get to participate for free?
Two teams from our district, correct?
Correct.
But are these two teams formed from different schools in the district?
No, these two teams are Scranton School District students.
Right.
There's other, there's other teams that from out of the area are formed to participate.
Right. How, how are the kids picked from, I mean, from Scranton High School, West Grant High School?
Yeah, I, how, who plays and how they're picked, I don't.
Oh, okay. But it's, it's, it's a school-wide, a district-wide participation.
Right.
Okay.
So from what I was hearing from, you know, from the discount that we're getting for our kids that participate, plus the cost for us to open the doors, to provide electricity, all of that, is this benefiting us? Or are we breaking even?
We're, we're getting seventeen hundred dollars. I mean, I, I think it's a work坊program. It's a summer league.
Let me, let me ask you another question. Is this benefiting our students?
It's a summer league where we have two teams, one from West, one from Scranton. That's about three that we charge.
So it's a summer program?
It's a summer aid program.
Which I would say is beneficial to our students. Okay.
And I just have one more question about the damages with the insurance. Is there some kind of walkthrough before and after where things are signed off on? Thank you.
I do have one. I do have one question, if you don't mind. Knowing that you, you have your U-12, U-14, U-16 age groups and everything, do you know which age groups are gonna be available or we're just gonna pick two teams? My, my question is, are we gonna have one high school team, one junior high team, or is that still up for grabs?
I think it's two high school teams, one from West and one from Scranton.
Okay.
And I, I know I really don't seem stupid when I ask this question, but I'm just gonna go for it. How many kids does that, I mean, kids are on basketball team, is what I'm asking.
I'd say roughly about U-12.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call.
Dr. Finney.
I would be remiss if I didn't, if I didn't tell you this because you've had a long discussion. In one of my meetings, issues were raised with this particular group and items such as chairs and tables being broken and missing items from like bathrooms. I do think we need to follow up, as you mentioned, and have, have checkers checking off and then charging them if anything is broken. That came up in a couple of my meetings from, from sources.
Yeah, I, Dr. Finney. That, that came up before, and we do have controls in place. Our principals are responsible to do the walkthroughs, to make sure that nothing is broken. I know that Ms. Heenan, who was here tonight, had complained to me. When I checked back with the principal, he totally disagreed with what she was saying. So, you know, it's, we do have controls in place, and I've heard the same things that you have heard.
Well, just because we are a little limited on our funds, I just don't want to see tables and chairs missing from a building, and we can't afford to replace them, so. And it is a for-profit group.
Okay. Roll call. Mr. Forsberg.
I, I wish I had one.
The magic, yes.
After getting that, I'm, I'm gonna say no.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Goodmark.
Yes.
I know I can't continue to comment, but I think, given the timing of this, yes, I would again reiterate that, that controls need to continue to be adhered to, and perhaps this is something we need to assess again.
Every, every year, they're, they do apply and we bring it to you. So it's not something that lasts and lasts and lasts, so we will continue to do that and continue to monitor.
And I guess what I was hoping was, are we charging enough money for this, for this to our students?
Mr. General, that's comparatively speaking with what you're doing with other groups and rentals, do you feel as though this is a fair price?
Yes, that's okay.
Well, given the fact that we've had the discussion after the vote started, I think perhaps we might want to restart the vote because some of the information may change. Mr. Forsberg, explain.
So roll call again.
So are we concluded on the, on the question?
I, I apologize. I started right there.
No, 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 no. I just wanna be sure that we're doing this properly. Any other on the question, Tom Thomas? Now I think we should start the vote over.
Roll call. Mr. Forsberg.
I'll go, yes, thanks.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Goodmark.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew.
Yes.
Mr. Norton.
Yes.
Mr. Popple.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Sign in for me. Okay.
So I'll be, I'll be calling my do-over soon, Miss Finney.
What's that? I'm sorry.
So I get a do-over just once in a while. Comes back.
Now we have the five.
It is a recommendation of the superintendent and the operations committee that the following resolution is approved. Whereas Hunt Engineering has submitted a proposal to prepare the design of the Francis Willard Water Infiltration Project and therefore be resolved that the Scranton School Board approve Hunt Engineering to proceed with the Willard Water Project at a total cost of fees and reimbursables of thirteen thousand dollars. I saw.
Second.
On the question.
So on the question, I see, and proceed with the Willard Water Project, but what we're, we're doing here is we're completing, correct? It's the design?
It is the design, Mr. Schuster.
And that work has already been completed? That's how I understand it. Is that, is that true? That, that part of it has been completed, Dr. Carrion?
It, it has not. Is that correct, Michael?
That's correct.
You are approving for Hunt Engineers to do the design project, the design work for the project. Approving or not, approving up to you?
Well, we previously did a report phase that identified the problem, and we did the field work. We snaked the lines, put a camera in line, and identified the problems and solution and attached report. The next phase is to design that solution.
But this, this survey is for work that's been performed.
For the next phase.
Right. It has not been performed yet, designed.
So what was previously approved was the, was the field work and everything leading up to this point, and that we have, I would say, to do for, correct?
We, yeah. We, we created, completed that phase of the report, yes. We, you know, Hunt, Hunt has completed all of their design phases so far that we've been hired to do. I believe some people may, may be misinformed with that process. We're, what we talked about before, we're, we're waiting for prices from the contractor. We're, we're not the contractor. We were hired to do the design, the design is complete, our services have been completed. You know, so.
Okay, so that being said, that's what this thirteen thousand dollars is for. Okay, we're paying what you've done already, not posting a check for work that you are going to do.
There'll also be designing, the, the work that they're going to be doing, so that the, the draw up or the design could be done at this point. Mr. Lively, do you think you could explain this somewhat, going from our past, the architecture engineers? Has this been their process as well? I know it's a little somewhat out of your scope, but.
Uh-huh. Okay. My understanding of the process is, as Mr. Jones has mentioned, there was a resolution adopted a few meetings back where you're hired in to begin the report phase and the field work for the project. Now the design of this has been provided with a cost of thirteen thousand dollars for the design and reimburseals. That would be the next step in this process. And based off of that, that would be the bid document that would go out to contractors to determine what the scope of that was, so there'd be another resolution to be adopted at some point once those bids come in. It's a little different than the project that we talked about with Whittier, which was done on the Keystone Purchasing Network to do the timing of it. That contractor would be submitting to Mr. Jones a bid based off the scope of the work that they've already prepared for them.
Yeah, they, this is the engineering for him, it's not the construction for him.
Right, yeah. And the contractor question for the Whittier project is S.J. Thomas. Keystone Purchasing Network along the, the board you approved is a bid out to services statewide, and they will order contracts in regions of the state based off the lowest combined prices that, that they've received. So it's two projects, similar schools, bid methods are a little different. Right, right?
Because it's Keystone.
Yes, we, yeah, we have, yeah, so for, what are your questions? Bids haven't been completed yet because the scope of work hasn't been decided. So like, if the design is going to determine what scope of work is, is to be done next, to be placed out to bid.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Yeah. But some of the other work that was performed was the initial report and the field work, which through resolution was authorized at prior meeting.
They've assessed the situation, how we're gonna, if we're together, what goes into this.
Right.
And would I be correct to assume that that would all have to be done again, should we say this isn't working?
Should we say we'll be better than that?
I mean, this, I, yeah, I mean, I, this seems to be a frustrating, I, I find any construction to be a frustrating. Let's get that out of there right now. I, this is not exclusive to this experience, but I, I think this is a frustrating process here that has many more steps than I anticipated, and perhaps I, I misunderstood what was presented to us. But if we were to say, this is, we, we need to sever our ties and move on, we would have to do this work again, correct? But this, this project stands on its own at this point from all of the other things we discussed this evening.
That's correct.
That is correct. We're voting on just Willard's water infiltration.
I mean, you guys were hired, right, to give us all the services we needed, right?
Right.
I mean, this board has got to place some trust in these people as to what they're gonna do. I mean, what do you say, you have a four-week window for your bids?
Right, yeah.
Okay, and then you gotta get that all back in, all right? Be able to put a price out there, am I correct?
Right, right, yeah.
I mean, you know what, we're, we're killing this project here. We got, we do have some deadlines here, you know? Why are we making it more than it is? So.
Because this is a lot of money.
I understand it's a lot of money, but, but that's why, that's why you hired him. That's why you hired him, right there. He's the professional.
And I think it's our responsibility to make sure that resources are allocated reasonably reasonably.
I get that, Kate, I get that, a hundred and ten percent.
Okay, can we, um, do we have any more questions?
Well, I agree, we have deadlines, and I believe moving forward could do as well any, that's not, that's not a degradation that you're working to this point because, frankly, I don't know a lot about it, but we're hopeful to move along as quickly as possible just due to the necessity of these current projects. I'll be going yesterday just because of the necessity of this project, but moving forward, if deadlines are met and not too short or reasonable pressure, but we have to move forward, we have to move forward as any speed as possible, we don't know the exact cost of those things, as we will point sharply as that we're moving forward.
And, and I will tell you that I have been pushing, Michael can attest to this, because we started late. By the time they were appointed, by the time we got the projects that we wanted to work on approved by the board, and then began our, our work together, that, that all took time. So we're not in a case where we're, you know, we're, we're moving in a rhythm, and I, I have been putting a lot of pressure on them to try to push these projects forward because I knew exactly where we would be tonight. And unfortunately, we landed there now without Michael trying to get, and have the bids.
I mean, I'm certainly sensing frustration on your point, on your part from some information that you expected to have for you to be prepared to come this evening, and I, I understand that. But I, I agree with Mr. Duffy. I mean, I, I think you laid out some dates earlier in the meeting, and if this is able to get back on track, that's great. I certainly do not be in favor of holding up a project or redoing work and, and re-incurring expenses like that, but I, I think we're all on the same page that this is.
I will remind you that Mr. Brazil left, and I have picked up his work, and has helped me as much as he possibly can with his work. We are short-staffed, and it's difficult for us to move work the way we would like to, and, and our vendors all experience our frustrations. So if we could just be patient through this project, and then we'll weigh and measure with the board as we go along.
I, I agree with that.
And then, then your, the decision is yours in the long run, but if you could just make allowances for all the shortages that we're experiencing right now, it just rolls over. And I think we talked about that earlier this evening, about the difficulty we're having with the role of masking tape we have. Okay? Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have any more questions? Roll call. Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Ms. Goodmark.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew.
Yes.
Mr. Norton.
Yes.
Mr. Popple.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Forsberg.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Sign in for me. Okay. Policy Director of the Board, Personnel. Oh, F1, Personnel, Director Forsberg.
To members of the Board of Schools Directors of the City of Scranton, it is a recommendation of the Superintendent and Personnel Committee that the attached list of appointments, assignments, resignations, and means of absences is approved. Appointments are effective upon receipt of proper criminal records, immigration, medical, and child abuse reports, salaries are in accordance with collective bargaining agreements respectfully submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question.
Yes, on the question, you'll see one of the candidates on there. Last name is Lush. I'll, I'll admit, yes, it's the same name, but no relationship.
Thank you.
So, now that.
Roll call. I'm, I'm sorry, do you have a question? Yes, I do. The professional appointments, can we just get an update on where we stand with the number of the special education, the, the positions that were worked into the budget? I know many were hired and we lost some, we got some. Where are we now?
Do you want to, could you, please? Do you need Sharon to be with you, or do you have it on?
I, I may refer to her at some point. Good evening, everyone. I believe at this point, based on the number of special ed teachers, the board authorized us to hire, that there is one remaining position from the original, I believe it was twelve. Are you nodding in a affirmative, Sharon?
Twelve, yes, and there's just the two for Monticello.
Yeah, I believe, I believe one is on tonight's agenda.
Correct.
Correct, yeah, so there's still one candidate for Monticello to hire, and that'll be done this summer.
So, so on this, there are, there are two, so there's one more after this?
One additional, yes, correct. Any other questions?
And the, the replacement is someone from that original pool of, I guess, eleven, if there's still one more to be filled. That, that's the position that's being replaced. We, we lost someone there, and we're replacing them with this person here tonight. Is that?
Just give me one second to locate the agenda. Yes, the first name is the, the one of the remaining two that we hired for next school year, so we bring one more to you at the next board meeting. And the second name started April twenty-second, so that was not one of the last two.
Any questions? Thank you.
Sorry, I guess I should repeat that, out of the twelve that were approved for the budget, there's one left.
Correct, there's one left.
Yes.
We were, it was a matter of waiting on certifications.
But I also believe it was to make room availability.
Right, we were waiting for the rooms to open, but, but we had already, when we interviewed, we had already picked the twelve people, and we were just waiting on, yes, they couldn't start because the rooms weren't done yet. But that's why that other person is not on the agenda now.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call. Ms. Goodmark.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew.
Yes.
Mr. Norton.
Yes.
Mr. Popple.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Forsberg.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Sign in for me.
Don't pick it any longer.
To members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, it is a recommendation of the Superintendent and the Policy Committee that the following resolution be approved. Whereas the following policies, one fifty, two twenty, three thirty-five, and nine thirteen, first read, have been revised by the Pennsylvania School Board Association. Policy one fifty, Title One, Comparability of Services. Policy two twenty, Student Expression Distribution and Posting of Materials. Policy three thirty-five, Family and Network Leaves. Policy nine thirteen, Non-School Organizations, Groups, Individuals. Whereas the policies zero zero six, zero zero six point one, three three seven, six zero six, and six one zero, first read, have been revised by the Scranton School District Policy Committee. Policy zero zero six, Meetings. Policy zero zero six point one, Attendance, that means via electronic communications. Policy three three seven, Vacation. Policy six oh six, Tax Collection. Policy six one zero, Purchases Subject to Bid Quotation. Whereas the following Board Operating Guideline, BOG zero zero four, BOG dash two, first read, has been revised by the Scranton School District Policy Committee. Zero zero four, BOG two, Board of School Directors' Application Form. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scranton School Board hereby approves as a first read revision of policy numbers one five zero, two two zero, three three five, and nine one three, recommended by the Pennsylvania School Board Association, and as a first read revision of policy numbers zero zero six, zero zero six point one, three three seven, six zero six, six one zero, and Board Operating Guideline, zero zero four, BOG two, recommended by the Scranton School District Policy Committee respectfully submitted. Do I have a second? Sir? On the question. I, I just will reiterate the fact that I do have a few small updates of things put in wrong places and a few rewordings that suggest, but nothing that changes the point of what we're doing some more on the back. Very good. Roll call. Ms. Goodmark.
Yes.
Mr. Lush.
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew.
Yes.
Mr. Norton.
Yes.
Mr. Popple.
Yes.
Mr. Schuster.
Yes.
Mr. Forsberg.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes.
Sign in for me. New business?
I have something quick under the business. I read an article today that I think I should share with all of you. This is in Harrisburg, so the state takes control of Harrisburg. Petition filed by Education Secretary Kate Rivera said he is CPO appointed to receiver because of the district's failure for refusal to implement recovery plan. This is a scary reality for Harrisburg, and I think we need to take notice. I just wanted to share that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron.
Mr. Mr. McAndrew, I'm calling this, pardon me. What, how long were they in recovery?
I think since two thousand twelve.
Twelve?
Yes.
And they're not implementing a plan?
I, I just shared my, 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 that just came up. Yes, that, so.
Yeah. Serious. Anything else?
I too, and I, I would just like to close the meeting by congratulating on part of all our successes of our seniors graduating from both high schools, Scranton High and West Grant High School. We wish them all the luck in their new endeavors. And in the sphere...
In the spirit of our veterans ceremony tonight, I'd like to just thank all our past, present, and future servicemen that sacrificed for our country, as well as our probably young boys. It's your pleasure, I'd like to thank you for your service to the country.
Thank you.
Is that good for your story?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd just like to mention, I'd just like to add after that, the individuals we have here tonight, okay, young men, young women here, again, there is no draft, all right, just these young men and women volunteer, serve their country. Now keep in mind, we've had two students from Scranton High School, our Scranton School District, that have made the ultimate sacrifice, that I can mention. I mean, there's probably more, I believe there's actually three that I can read off hand, but recently, in the latest conflict, was two young men that had lost their lives. So, you know, you gotta really have hats on to these young men.
Can I take up for your service?
Thank you.
Thank you, needing to adjourn. A motion to adjourn. Second. Needing to adjourn.